Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting on August 20th. We're going to have our adoption of the agenda, and I'll let our Chair take it from here.
Thank you very much for filling in for me for that 20 seconds there. First of all, we'd need to accept our agenda. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda as it was distributed? If not, can we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we need to approve minutes, and we have two different meetings, and I understand we have some corrections to these, so I'm going to start off with the regular meeting minutes from our July 16th meeting. We have some corrections and...
I would like to make a motion that we table it until the next meeting, just so we get a chance to double-check and re-clarify everything. Second.
Any discussion? And that case, all in favor of tabling those minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We will take those up at our next meeting. And then we have the July 30th work session minutes. Do we have amendments to that? In that case, could I have a motion to accept as written? Mr. Rogers moves second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, and now we can move on to our public hearings. And I should explain the reason we were all dashing into the room, as we just had a work session before this meeting, and so, as often happens, we talk to the very last minute. I want to remind everyone of some of the rules for our public hearings. We start a public hearing with a staff presentation that they'll do at this podium here. We follow that with an applicant presentation that also occurs at this podium. Once those two presentations have been given, I will open up a public hearing. During the public hearing, each speaker is asked to come down this set of stairs here, hand a card, an ID card, to our clerk, please, and speak at the podium to my right, your left, and you'll notice on that podium, there's a little black box. When you start speaking, that black box will have a green light. After four and a half minutes, that light will turn orange or yellow, and then after five minutes, it'll turn red. At five minutes, I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks, to be fair to other speakers. I'm going to ask that you be concise, avoid repetition, please respect that five-minute rule to give everybody a chance to speak. If you have a number of you here to speak on the same issues, maybe you can designate one or two representatives to represent all of your perspectives. And please be clear here, we don't ask questions of people speaking at the public hearing. It's really our chance to listen to you, and so we usually don't get into a conversation with speakers at the public hearing. Once we have no one else that wants to speak at the public hearing, I will close the public hearing, and at that point in time, the Board will have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff or the applicant. And with that said, I'm going to start with our first case, which is the Wright property. It's 12 REZ 01. And Ms. Bierman, I think, you did it to me again, didn't you? Mr. Nichols.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. This is a public hearing for rezoning case 12 REZ 01. It's also known as the Wright property. It consists of approximately 5.3 acres located at 1408 Old Apex Road. This case was presented to the Board in May of this year. Since that time, the applicant's proposed revised conditions and requested that the Council refer the case back to this Board for further review. The property has frontage on Old Apex Road. It's located approximately 550 feet south of the intersection with West Chatham Street. Property is currently zoned residential 40. Proposed zoning is residential multifamily conditional use. Subsequent to the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on May 21st, the applicant revised the conditions to limit the maximum number of dwelling units to 32. This was presented through the Town Council at a meeting in June. There were no changes to any of the other zoning conditions reviewed by the Planning Board. The applicant also requested that Council not vote on the proposed rezoning and refer the case back to the P&amp;Z Board for further review. Since the June Council meeting, the applicant's further revised the conditions to limit the maximum number of dwelling units to 30. All the other conditions remain unchanged. And since it's been a few months, I'll quickly review the proposed conditions. In addition to the maximum number of dwelling units, there's a natural buffer area that will be provided along the southwest end of the property. This is in addition to perimeter buffers required by the LDO. Parking lot lighting will be a maximum of 18 feet in height, and we'll use cutoff fixtures. No dwelling unit will be closer than 150 feet to the western property line. There'll be a 60-foot type A buffer provided along the western property line. Each unit shall have an individual garage, and there should be evergreen shrubs maintained to provide an opaque screen along the southern perimeter of parking and vehicular travel areas that aren't screened by buildings. Slide helps illustrate some of the proposed conditions. The dashed white lines are buffers that would be required by the LDO, and are not a condition of the rezoning. You can see the area of the proposed 60-foot type A buffer, which is the green dashed line. Next to that, area shaded in green shows the additional buffer area that's being proposed. The applicant's also proposing that no buildings be located within 150 feet of the western property line, that's shown here in the red dashed line. This slide just helps show some of the density associated with the proposed number of units. Since the last meeting with the P&amp;Z Board, the resulting density based on the maximum number of units has dropped a little less than 1 and 1/2 units per acre, from 6.98 to 5.58. Subject property is one of four lots shown in an area on the Cary Land Use Plan that contains a note designating the overall area as low to medium density residential. This note should also be considered in conjunction with the text in Chapter 6 of the Land Use Plan document, which references transitions between uses. Resulting density on each of the parcels with the LDR to MDR designation should be looked at with consideration of how the proposed use or density incorporates transitions to the adjacent uses. According to Cary's GIS data, the property is potentially impacted by stream buffers. The applicant has provided correspondence indicating that these features are not subject to the buffer requirements. This information will be reviewed further as part of any site or subdivision plan submitted for the property. Parked Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan indicates a proposed greenway along the western portion of the subject property. The exact location of a greenway would be determined during the review of a site or subdivision plan. Property has frontage along Old Apex Road, which is designated as a major thoroughfare on the town's comprehensive transportation plan. Since the right-of-way adjacent to the property is not currently at its ultimate planned width, dedication of additional right-of-way and construction would be required along the property's frontage at the time the property develops. There are no existing or planned transit routes in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. Notice of the second public hearing was sent to owners within 400 feet of the subject property. Notice of the hearing was also posted on the property and published in the Cary News. This map shows the properties that submitted protest petitions on the proposed rezoning. And that concludes staff's presentation. I believe the applicant is here to speak.
Chairman and members of the Planning Board, my name is Glenda Topp, and I'm here tonight representing the rights who are proposing to rezonate their property from R40 to RMF conditional use. Before I get started, I just want to add one point. On the, in the staff report that you all received, and I'm not, I may have not seen it correctly, the condition reads that there, that each unit shall have a two-car garage. I think it said individual garages, but on the staff report, it's two-car garages. I don't know if I missed that or not, but it is two-car garages. What I'm going to do is just briefly go over where we, where we started and where we are today. We started with three zoning conditions, a maximum of 42 units, density not to exceed eight dwelling units per acre, and a condition providing for a natural buffer area along the western property line. And also want to point out from the start, staff did determine that our request does comply with the town's comprehensive plan. We met with the residents on numerous occasions. We revised the conditions. We also heard what the Board had to say at your last meeting about the density. The last time we met with the neighbors, we proposed a reduction of the number of units to 30. We started at 42. At your Board meeting, it was 37. This is approximately a 29% reduction in the number of units. Also want to point out, the density is now 5.6. If we were to have started today, that density falls within the TR category because a TR conditional use would have been a maximum of six units per acre, so I do, I did want to just point that out. We feel we've worked very hard with the, with the property owners and the concerns raised, and that it can be seen in the seven conditions that we've provided. I want to just go over how we feel we've done this to address the concerns of the property owners to the west. We added a condition that states no dwelling unit shall be located closer than 150 feet to the western property line. We went from a 40-foot type A buffer to a 60-foot type A buffer, and this was because of a potential greenway within that area to ensure that there could still be an opaque buffer along the western property line. Concerns were raised to the south. We added a condition concerning planning additional material at a greater height where there would not be buildings along vehicular use areas and parking areas so that you would, the car lights would be screened. To further address light pollution, we reduced the size of the lights in parking lots and stated that they would be cutoff fixtures. There were concerns to the folks to the north in Foxtail Run. Want to point out, there is an existing 50-foot buffer along their perimeter, and there will be a required setback buffer off of our property line when we developed after the last meeting, and this is new. The, the condition number seven that addresses the additional plant material that could go in if, along travel aisles and, and parking lots where there's no buildings, we added the northern property line for that also because, because not knowing exactly how the layout will be. Basically, what we're saying is, you know, cars going through this project, there would be additional plant material, whether it's to the north or the south. So we did add that condition. There were comments about parking and how that would work. We are, we are committing to a two-car garage, and this is in addition to the town's requirement for overflow parking. Traffic was a concern, as was access. We are now down to 30 units. Before, there was not a traffic study required with the number of units. There is still not. As far as access, access, as you all know, right now is, is through Old Apex Road. In working with staff, this is something that is reviewed at time of site plan. It's also a state-maintained road, so NC DOT will review the proposed access points, and issuance of a drive per minute in accordance with applicable standards will be required. The applicant did meet with NCOD, NC DOT about access, and understands that the location and type of access point will be determined at site plan. Both NCOT and the town will review the location, and wherever it's determined to be and whatever it's required to be, the applicant will, or the developer will be required, be required to meet NC DOT requirements. And we do believe that the road network can support the 30 units that are proposed, and again, we have faith in NC DOT and the town that the, the location will, will be at the safest location possible. Land use plan for this site dates back to 1999, as has been brought up before. Our piece comprises 5.37 acres, and this is for a larger tract of 21.3 acres that is designated on the town's land use plan for low to medium density residential. In Chapter 6 of the land use plan, it talks about ways to transition into different areas, and they talk about density, and they also talk about changing, well, density reductions for transition, but also in providing the appropriate vegetative buffer. We feel that we've done both. We feel that we have gradually gone from a high density to a medium density to a, to a low density. Again, the units translates to 5.6 units per acre. Medium density is, is four to eight, so we feel we're right in the middle of that. Just going into a little more detail about that, the Wright property is adjacent to high-density residential to the north, the Foxtail Run condominiums. It has a density of about 10 units per acre. There's also vacant office land to the north and a veterinary hospital. We believe that, that we've transitioned with a medium density as appropriate for here. To the south, we feel that, that we provide an appropriate transition there. Again, we are at a little over 5 and 1/2 units per acre. The two homes that are to the south are 670 and 310 feet from our subject property to the nearest point. There's existing vegetation. There's also a 40-foot type A buffer that is required along our southern property line. There's also a lake between the Wright property and any house south of there, and again, there was concern about light pollution. We feel like we've addressed that. And again, to the west, we feel that we have gone from what the code requires to the 60-foot type A buffer. We've also committed to a 150-foot distance from our property to the closest home, so we do feel that, that we've done an excellent job with transitioning to the west. We believe that the Wright property is the appropriate location for the medium density. Again, it's 5.56, and that the lower density is more appropriate on the remaining portion of the property going south, which is closer to the single-family homes. By designating the property on the land use plan for low to medium density, the town did envision the property to develop as something. As I'm sure most of you have heard, at Council meetings, typically, R40 in Cary is considered a holding zone until development is ready to occur. I want to point out, as I've done at other public hearings, under R40, there are uses that are permitted by right or by special use that are residential, and there are also some non-residential uses that are permitted in R40. Not that everyone could, could potentially be on this track, but I do want to point out that staying R40 does not mean it would remain undeveloped because it could go straight to site plan. We have four neighborhood meetings. We had numerous conversations with the residents, and, and we feel that we have been working hard trying to address their concerns. However, we have, we are still at an impasse. The residents, at least I know the ones that will be here tonight, are still opposed to our rezoning. At our last meeting, roughly, they would like to see, I think, around 12 to 15 units on the property, whether they be single-family or detached. Real quickly, I want to do a comparison based on gross density for our property. If, at a minimum of 40,000 square foot lots, the property could yield five units. At 12,000 square foot lots, the yield would be 19, and at 8,000 square foot lots, the yield would be 29. And this is, again, is based on gross density of 5.37 units per acre, which is how the town bases its density. We're proposing 30 units, and we feel that if you look at this compared to, again, an R8 zoning, we feel that this is, you know, further justification for 30 units being appropriate. In summary, the number of units have been reduced from 42 to 30. We believe that the number of units proposed is appropriate for this location. Our density is 5.6, which is in compliance with the town's adopted land use plan. We believe that the, the requirements in the LDO and our zoning conditions will adequately protect the surrounding properties, whether it be residential or non-residential. We feel that, that we have provided the, the necessary protection. We feel that the zoning classification is appropriate, particularly with the zoning conditions. And lastly, we feel that the rights have a right to develop their property, and again, we feel that, that what's being proposed here is in harmony with the area, and be happy to answer any questions. And I tried to go really fast so I wouldn't take too long.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open our public hearing. If you care to speak on this case, would appreciate it if you'd make your way down these stairs, give your comment card to our clerk, and again, reminder of speech, please speak at the podium on your left, and appreciate you abiding by the five-minute limit. And please begin your comments by telling us your name and your address, please.
I'm Lynn Wright. I live at 2711 University Drive in Durham, North Carolina. I brought with me tonight a visual. This is all the contracts that we have gathered together trying to sell this property for the last 20 years. Lynn and I have paid property tax on this Wake County since, for the last 34 years, but after we decided not to build on the property, we decided that being in Cary, and Cary was growing, it would be a good investment. So we agreed to hold on to it and take care of it. In 19, in 2003, Cary welcomed us into the town of Cary, which meant we started paying town taxes as well. One of the main objections you will hear tonight, and you've heard, is about the traffic on Old Apex Road. I've done some research. I apologize for not having a copy for everyone, but I want it submitted to into the records of the minutes. Car fatal crashes and road accidents in Cary from 1986 to 2009, not a one of them is on Old Apex Road. Then I started Googling because we don't have it nice and neat like this as a list, and I found that in 2012, they have, we've, you've had several fatal accidents. Of course, none of them are on Old Apex Road. None of them in any of those three years are on Old Apex Road. But on West Chatham Street, you've had a terrible one on February, on the 4th, 2014. Since then, the town of Cary has placed six signs warning about that intersection. I'm sure if you live here, you're familiar with it. Also, there were some deaths on Cary Parkway. Since 2010, Cary offices have made 2,291 traffic stops and 719 citations on the Cary Parkway. I honestly believe that if Old Apex Road was so dangerous, it would be listed in some of this, although I still have, I'm still talking to Research Center in Chapel Hill and some other places trying to get you some more data. The good news is that AAA of North Carolina has awarded the traffic safety, Cary as a traffic safety community. Cary has received the TOP award of all the towns in North Carolina because they've had this award for seven straight years. That first year they received the award was in 2007, when our, we had a contractor, and it was rejected because of the worry about the traffic on Old Apex Road. I'm asking you tonight, unless objections have data as good as mine, that you not consider perceived fears as a reason for objecting our property. The other thing I want to say is that since we went through, started this procedure, I have been diagnosed with severe osteoporosis of the lower spine. I'm in, being treated at the Geriatric Treatment Center in UNC. The catch 22 to my position is this, until my spine collapses, I cannot get physical therapy paid by insurance. And yet, I had paid out of pocket and had a physical therapist walk me through what kind of exercises I needed to do, and I need to be in the care of someone who knows how to treat this disease, otherwise I can go to a gym and do more harm than good. But I need to be doing weight-bearing exercises. I need medication. The medication that I really need does not, I don't, I fall through the cracks again because my spine hasn't collapsed. I can't use some of the more expensive medications. I fall through the cracks. I don't, where's my pocket to pull the money to take care of this? It's in 1408 Old Apex Road. I need to, to sell this property so I can try to stay in my home. They've already told me how I need to upgrade the bathroom.
I'm sorry, I, I need to stop you there. You've reached your five-minute limit. I appreciate your comments, but we now need to move on to the next public speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have someone else that would like to speak to us on this case?
I hope I'm speaking to the right speaker here this time. I got lost the last time. I'm Lynn Wright.
Could you, could you move over just a little bit there? Now, you got the mic.
I thought we had stereo. Okay. I'm Lynn Wright. I reside at 206 Dublin Woods Drive in Cary, and I am half-owner of the lot under discussion. I primarily wish to discuss this Board's previous review of our rezoning petition. The Board's main objection, as far as I could tell, was based solely on traffic concerns. But in case there were some other unexpressed reasons, I'd like to present my synopsis of some of the other objections. Concerned have been raised that potential residents of the proposed development would be subjected to high noise levels. The two main noise factors in that area are the fire station and the railroad. Nobody's going to gripe about the fire station. That's home security. And the railroad has been there long before most of the residences in that area were built. The sheer number of residences along Old Apex Road indicates that noise is not a major problem in that area. The Foxtail Run owners have implied that having homes with a lower density than their condominiums have, and with two-car garages as opposed to their parking lots, would depreciate the value of their properties. What would they say if condominiums just like theirs were being proposed? Some of the Triangle Forest residents seem to be prepared, unfortunately, to object to anything other than a at no cost to them status quo. The 150-foot buffer that's being proposed will consume over 8/10ths of an acre. That's larger than a majority of the lots in Triangle Forest. I would think that should be an adequate buffer. But back to the traffic issue. If you're familiar with that area, the traffic light at Old Apex Road and Chatham Street provides adequate breaks in the lane next to our Do we have someone else that would like to speak to us on this case?
I hope I'm speaking to the right speaker here this time. I got lost the last time. I'm Lynn Wright.
Could you move over just a little bit there? Now, you got the microphone.
I thought we had stereo. Okay. Uh, I'm Lynn Wright. I reside at 206 Dublin Woods Drive in Cary, and I am half-owner of the lot under discussion. Uh, I primarily wish to discuss this board's previous review of our rezoning petition. The board's main objection, as far as I could tell, was based solely on traffic concerns. But in case there were some other unexpressed reasons, I'd like to present my synopsis of some of the other objections. Concerned have been raised that potential residents of the proposed development would be subjected to high noise levels. The two main noise factors in that area are the fire station and the railroad. Nobody's gonna gripe about the fire station. That's home security. And the railroad has been there long before most of the residences in that area were built. The sheer number of residences along Old Apex Road indicates that noise is not a major problem in that area. Foxdale Run owners have implied that having homes with a lower density than their condominiums have and with two-car garages as opposed to their parking lots would depreciate the value of their properties. What would they say if condominiums just like theirs were being proposed? Some of the Triangle Forest residents seem to be prepared, unfortunately, to object to anything other than a at no cost to them status quo. The 150-foot buffer that's being proposed will consume over eight tenths of an acre. That's larger than a majority of the lots in Triangle Forest. I would think that should be an adequate buffer. But back to the traffic issue. If you're familiar with that area, the traffic light at Old Apex Road and Chatham Street provides adequate breaks in the lane next to our lot for people to exit the lot and turn left without having to cross busy traffic. The lot's traffic light simply stops it. And with concern to the curve on beyond, there are still more simple solutions specific to our property and the apparent commercial development across the street. The growth of brush over the cur, uh, oh, sorry, in the curve that hangs over into the property right of way could and should be cut back to increase visibility. And to the benefit and safety of all the area residents, the speed limit should be reduced. It's been done on Old Apex Road, uh, should be done on Old Apex Road. It has been done on Reedy Creek Road. Anytime traffic density or population density increases, to put the point of safety, we reduce the speed limits, and rightly so. Old Apex Road from Cary to Apex is a curving, hilly road, and any property on its east side has no other choice for egress. Throughout its length, both residential and commercial drives enter the road in the middle of curves and below the summit of hills. Some of those drives in curves serve a great many more residences than our proposed, those proposed for our lot. The Cary Stone Townhouses and the new Phillips Swift Creek Apartments are just two examples. The latter, just two tenths of a mile away, was approved for over 190 units, and they exit only onto Old Apex Road. That development finished, I believe, this year, probably started in 2011, may even have been approved by this board. And there are indications that the commercial property directly across the road from our lot is also going to be developed. The last time I spoke to this board, I simply requested that our petition receive consideration on par with that received with all the developments in the area. I wouldn't need to be here tonight if I felt that that had been the case. If traffic is indeed an issue, there are simple solutions, and we are asking for a lot more, or rather, for a lot less than what the Phillips Swift Creek Apartments apparently recently got. So that I am asking that you grant our rezoning petition. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this case, please?
My name is John Stanjeski. I presently own two lots, two rental pieces of property at Hunting Chase. And I find it very odd that the way this site map shows that, it really doesn't show Hunting Chase properly. Is anyone here of, do they even know where Hunting Chase is? Can you find it on a map? Would you, could you show it to me on this map?
Um, not on this map, but I know where it is 'cause I'm tripping down it and I'm not the only one here.
Well, what I'm trying to say is the map is deceiving. It's deceitful. This builder has been working on these principles. I guess this is the second or third time that they've tried to build. First, they started approaching us to use our property and then kind of trying to say they were gonna force us to use our entrance and exit for their benefit. Now, the last time, they talked about attacking the buffer zone behind Hunting Chase. Tonight, I heard someone state that the fact that they were going to keep that buffer zone intact, I think it's a 50-foot buffer zone, and then add an additional buffer zone. But I heard no mention of the north. Now, if that map is north is to the top and south is to the bottom, I heard no mention from either the owners of the property or the lady it was here to begin with, the first lady who spoke, about the north end of the, of the, uh, of the property. It seems as though they've had a lot of problems with the people to the left and with the town, but they think they can just mull right over us. I think they better address that. I don't want that buffer zone attacked. And if they are gonna add an additional buffer zone, then let them show that on their site map. I'd like to see on their site map what is proposed for a buffer zone, and also, where do they expect to come out onto Old Apex? Instead of leaving it up in the air, I'd like to see that out there so we can all see it and make a proper judgment. I'm very, very sorry with, about the owner's problems with her health. But, you know, I have relapsing MS. So I don't, I'm sorry, but her requests for owning all these properties and trying to push down, I feel, push down my throat and the other owners, something which is just convenient for her, for her building and her profit, I give her no sympathy. I'm sorry, but I think there are other things which have to be addressed. I don't know about the Old Apex Road situation. That is something I'm going to rely on the township. But one thing that does bother me is that I think the township for all zoning problems should, uh, how can I put it? Go by the tax map to let people know by the tax map that are adjacent to that property in question, what is coming along. You know, I have not received one bit of information in two years about anything going on there except for what other residents have told me. And I live right in Cary. Now, I find that serving the builders, but not serving the residents of this town, of which I am one. I think that's about all I can tell you, except that I don't know who, any, who approves of these site maps, but I think a lot more information should be on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address us?
Hi, my name is David Good. My wife and I live in Foxdale Run. We've been there just short of 15 years. We're actually the longest owners in the history of the property. We agree with the board that too much development in this proposed property would create an extremely dangerous traffic situation on Old Apex Road, and we're very happy that you denied it last time. My wife and I both work for the state government. We drive on that road every single day, going to work and going shopping. Even 30 units could create an extremely dangerous situation there. Assuming that every household has just two cars for the two-car garage, and assuming that only one family member in each of those 30 households work, at a minimum, you're going to have 30 cars trying to get out of that one lane, onto Old Apex, in front of a blind curve every morning at rush hour, and trying to get back into there every evening at rush hour. It's going to be extremely dangerous. And you can't put a traffic light there because you'd be putting a light directly in front of a blind curve. It wouldn't be, it would be dangerous to come out of the new property and turn right. It will be suicide to come out of there and try and turn left. You'd be turning left directly in front of a blind curve. People will smack right into you. So we're, I'm frankly, if that property does get built personally, I will probably avoid that road, going to work and coming home every day, and go all the way around it to West, to West Chatham and come down to our property that way, but by a Cary Parkway, 'cause I think it'll just be too dangerous. It'll be extremely dangerous at night for people trying to get in and out of there. Now, we have heard that there will be lights put on the property for the new construction. We have not heard anything about any traffic, I'm sorry, streetlights at this proposed entrance for people trying to get in and out of there, especially in the winter when it's dark by 5 o'clock. This worries us a lot. We're happy that they're going to have two-car garages in there. We think that will definitely help the parking situation somewhat. Plus, people will be able to park in front of that garage. That will help, but it's not going to help the traffic situation very much. Our last concern is about the stormwater management. The previous owners of our condo had to build at their own expense a brick wall to keep the water from running down that hill and flooding their basement. With this new construction and the removal of the trees on that hill, which is about a 30-degree angle going up from the back of our property up to where the new construction will be, there'll be tremendous erosion of the water flooding right down that hill. Between our condominium building, the one my wife and I live in, and the very next one right next to us, there is a stream there now, mostly from runoff coming down that hill. So we're very worried about that type of erosion also, because as we know, the trees are what prevent erosion. All that water's gonna run right down the hill, basically into our basement and into our, and into our neighbor. So these are the concerns that we have. We still think that density would be too high for these reasons, for the erosion, for the parking, and especially for dangerous traffic. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, are you going to? Is, is there anyone else that would like to speak to us at the public hearing?
My name is Louis Hovis, H-O-V-I-S. I'm a resident of Triangle Forest at 233 Maryland Circle. I want to give you a little background on how we feel about some of these things. 50 years ago, we built a home here and purchased lots adjacent to our building, our own building lot. The end boundary of one of these lots later on became the western boundary of the Wright property when they bought. The subject of this rezoning meeting, our purchase of the extra land enabled us to have a home on a relatively large wooded track in a very convenient Cary location. To be sure, we have paid for this convenience over the years in extra property taxes. We are okay about that. The privacy and the quality of life that these wooded acres have afforded have more than compensated for any loss in value because of taxes. I am referring to our particular lot that does not have a building on it because of its parallel with the property we are discussing tonight. The property we're discussing tonight was also purchased under a senior family home zoning designation. I hope that this gives you a little bit of background. Now, for the modified zoning request that has been presented, it seems to be very close to the same request which this body denied earlier. Modest modifications are proposed, the number of units down to 30, and the inclusion of a two-car garage for each unit. No other changes. Anything else which may have contributed to the denial has not been addressed. Even this change that we mentioned, the two-car garage, are still, we feel, too many units in a small piece of land. The number of cars and parking would still present major problems. Seems to me that there's just no consideration to the lower end, low to medium, to the low side of the zoning designation. Other problems discussed in the first proposal, such as access, traffic problems, you've heard a lot about that, land configuration, et cetera, still exists and have not been addressed. I believe some of these problems contributed, some of these problems that have not been addressed, contributed to the proposal denial in the first place. Thank you.
My name is Joanna Duckwann. I live at 240 Maryland Circle in Triangle Forest. I spoke at the March 22 public hearing and at the May 21 planning and zoning board meetings. At those meetings, you heard me voice opposition on behalf of a number of Triangle Forest property owners to the 12-01 rezoning proposal. Town council was also provided correspondence signed by 42 residents of Triangle Forest that detailed our concerns. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of a number of Triangle Forest residents, some of whom are here, regarding the revised conditions. We've attempted to work with the applicant over the course of several meetings, as requested by council. The most recent meeting on August 7th was also attended by Gail Adcock, Ark Down Council representative. At that meeting, we clearly heard that the developer would not accept our suggested compromise from the May planning and zoning presentation, that anything less than their current proposal of 30 units or 5.5 per acre, the middle of medium density, would not work, not work. However, the property is noted on the Town of Cary land use plan as low to medium density or 1 to 8 units per acre. We do not wish to deny anyone their reasonable return, their reasonable return. We're simply seeking appropriate use of this parcel. Lowering the density from 37 to 30 units per acre does not alleviate the concerns that we've expressed since the initial proposal. The major concerns remain density, which contribute to parking and to traffic issues. The tracks' narrow width would constrain the placement of units, resulting in a rather compact development. A long, narrow driveway could make it difficult for fire and EMS vehicles to maneuver, potentially impeding timely response. Parking, especially overflow parking, would be at a minimum, and two-car garages are not the remedy. They do not alleviate the need for overflow parking. The compactness of the site may result in visitors parking on Old Apex Road. Access and traffic continue to be of great concern. Old Apex Road is designated a major thoroughfare, but it's not scheduled, as we heard, for any improvements for at least seven years. A single point of entry and exit on this much discussed blind curve is a hazard. Even a right-in, right-out would only shift the hazard to locations further up and down the road as residents try to execute U-turns, for example, at the fire station, at the garden supply, and at the entrance to Triangle Forest. Access and traffic considerations have not been proactively studied or addressed. The rezoning proposal takes the parcel out of the context of its surroundings, and it impedes a more gradual transition to the neighboring properties to the west and the south, both in terms of unit density, in terms of building height and mass. south, both in terms of unit density, in terms of building height and mass. We wish a use for this parcel of land that's more in context with the surrounding properties, that does not jeopardize the quality of life for those that live nearby, and for a greater assurance of safety for all of those who would be impacted by the development, including future residents and those that travel Old Apex Road today. In summary, the revised proposal does not improve conditions or address the concerns that have been repeatedly raised by the neighbors and acknowledged by both the town council and the planning and zoning board members. It remains an inappropriate use of this particular parcel, and we respectfully request that you recommend denial. We thank you for your consideration, and I would like to ask the neighbors from Triangle Forest that are here tonight to just stand for a moment and be acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address us?
Good evening. My name's Keith Ramsey, and I live at 1412 Old Apex Road. Myself and my families are probably affected more by the development than anybody, and I'd like to, I'd like you to know that I'm very pro-development. I'm pro-business and I'm pro-development. We also own the business across the street, but it's got to be quality planning. The height of this development has not been reduced at all. Thirty-five feet from single-story commercial buildings to 35-foot potential resident, three stories with a garage, you know, two stories with a garage under, is just not a good transition to a one- and two-story residential house that are somewhere between one house on an acre and one house on five acres. The track that we live on, that was originally 20 acres, it was subdivided into an organized subdivision which had covenants, and the covenants were dissolved to be able to develop the property. But it was organized as a, not what you guys see on a daily basis, but it was organized as a four-lot subdivision, single-family houses, and the covenants were dissolved prior to me buying it, but it's still a four-lot subdivision. I see that, I see their need to develop it, and I think they should be able to develop it, they should be able to sell it, but, you know, it's not, it shouldn't be at our expense. Couple of years ago, I heard a contractor say that he couldn't see the work from his house. Well, we've got a developer that doesn't live in Cary, and we've got one of the owners that doesn't live in Cary, and I don't think they're going to be able to see it from their house. You know, I'm sure the developer does good work, but the subdivision that's adjacent to it on the north side was started years ago and is still incomplete. So my confidence level's not very high. As far as parking goes, a two-car garage, it's my gut feeling that we were always planning on a two-car garage. Same price to put a two-car garage or a one-and-a-half-car garage as it is a two-car garage. It's just adding the verbiage to, you know, give us, throw us a bone. The buffer to the north is a 50-foot buffer. That would be connected house to connected house, very similar types of development. Both would be quality developments, but it's a 50-foot buffer. This 160-foot buffer, which is again kind of fluffy, because it's what's got to be designated as a future trail, and it's also going to be a BMP. So, you know, to say we're giving them a 160-foot buffer, I think is, you know, it's stretching it a little bit. But that's connected house to single-family residence on one acre. I've got a 40-foot buffer from connected house to single resident on five acres. So I think, you know, I would definitely want to see a bigger buffer in that area as we go to get to a reasonable density on that property and something that has connectivity. You know, a couple of times, I've heard people say, well, you know, connect it to your property when you develop your property. Well, that's not in play. You can't plan on something that's not going to happen or that may not happen. I've got kids that are going to enter high school this year. I'm planning on living there. I live across the street from my business, you know, I appreciate the quality of development in Cary, and I'm not planning on moving. It's expensive to be there. I moved over there because I want to see the trees stay there, but, you know, I'm not planning on going anywhere, so we have no connectivity. Density's too high for this long, narrow property, and, you know, I feel for Mrs. Wright and her medical issues, nobody, everybody should be able to sell your property. But when the property was purchased, it was purchased for $15,000, $20,000. You know, there's a huge return somewhere in between, and the gain shouldn't be at all the neighbors' expense. As far as traffic goes, Cary does have an award-winning safety record, and I would like you guys to think long and hard, I know we don't do traffic studies here, but think long and hard about keeping it that way. This is, this doesn't require a traffic study. I appreciate your time and all the volunteer that you do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Kelly Harrelson. I live at 101 Hunting Chase in the Foxdale Run community. I was here at the last meeting, and since then, we were invited to our first neighborhood meeting with the developer. And I, one of my concerns from that meeting was that we had talked about vegetation between the property for this rezoning request and Foxdale Run to the north, and I didn't see any of that language in writing, so if that's there, I'd like to see it in writing before I'd be happy. That was one of my main concerns, was that one of the criteria for consideration in reviewing the rezoning requests, looking at Section 341 of the Land Development Ordinance, was the proposed rezoning will not have significant adverse impacts on property in the vicinity of the subject track. To go from nothing but trees off my back deck and in my back windows to having a three-story building less than 50 feet away with nothing separating us, no vegetation, anything, that would definitely be an adverse impact to my property as well as my quality of life. So that's my, that's one of my main concerns. If that is being addressed, then I'd be happy to relieve that one. Another one of the considerations was that the proposed zoning classification is suitable for the subject property. And other people have already stated it tonight, so I'm not going to belabor the point, but it's not the size of the property, but the narrowness of the property that make it somewhat constrained for 30 units. And it seems that the most narrow point is where it butts up against my property. And we've been told that to increase the distance buffer between the north side and this property is not possible due to the concessions they've made to the south and the west and due to the narrowness of the property. To me, that says that perhaps the property is too narrow for the number of units they're trying to place on it. And the last consideration, which you've heard as well, is that the town and other service providers will be able to provide sufficient public safety, educational, recreational, transportation, utility, facilities, services to the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service to existing development. The proposed 30 units, along with the shape of the property, seem to me that it will create a hazard because it's going to be a narrow strip, and if, if there's an occasional party where people park on the street, access to that street may be blocked. If access to that street is blocked and an emergency happens, there's a concern. So you combine any two of these factors, a party, even a small one, and an emergency, and you may have the potential for disaster, and that should concern anybody around them as well as you guys on the council. So those are my concerns. Thank you for listening. Anytime.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Krokowski. I own 105 Oceana Place. It's right across from Keith's property and adjacent to the Wrights. My property contains a business. My main concern is all my neighbors have spoken to me, and they're all very, very worried about what's going on. I would not be impacted to the degree that they would, but I've known these folks for a long time, and I would like to support what they have to say because I can see their point of view. I can see the Wrights' point of view as well, but I, I do have a concern from the, just what is expected from Cary. When I came here in 1983, it was a small place, and I was very happy to be here, and I've seen the town grow, and I've seen very well-thought-out growth. I think the biggest mistakes have been made in developments where there's been poor planning for parking, ingress, egress, and what to do with the traffic and sometimes the road quality that goes into those larger developments. Personally, I guess that doesn't really impact me, but I was so glad that when I came to Cary, that a lot of those issues were taken care of. I didn't really have to worry about them. I didn't even know about them, to tell you the truth, but folks like yourself had already handled that for me. And in listening to my neighbors and feeling their concerns and just thinking back to my own experiences, I would like to speak out in support of all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? Anyone at all? Seeing no one approach the podium. I'm sorry. I missed you up there.
Pardon me. I'm David Martin. I'm the developer of Triangle Forest, and I live in Triangle Forest. And if I had brought all of my children and grandchildren, I would have had more than all the rest of them put together that are here, and a little bit over, I believe. We have 21 grandchildren we raised in Triangle Forest, and we have six children. And I gave them all lots there, and we developed there. Excuse me, but I want to speak to you tonight about something that's important, and I believe every one of you believe this, and I've got some information I'll hand out to you afterwards because I don't want to take up so much time giving it to you now. But the Bible says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." And I'm a visionary, and I'm a developer. I built my first house in Cary 71 years ago. It was a chicken house. I've been building something ever since. And I own the oldest mall in Cary, I own the oldest shopping center in Cary, and I've developed one of the few houses outside of Cary's jurisdiction, and it's now in Cary. But we've been blessed to have that location, and I'm interested in seeing people get along, even if we have misunderstandings. You know, it's better to light a candle than the curse of darkness. And I just want to point out a few things, and I'll start by telling you this. Herbert Young was a friend of mine. We went to school together and played football together, and we kind of developed things together. He built the first nice office building downtown Cary, and then he gave some land for a Christian school. I've given a land for some, for a Christian school, too, and for a sizable church. It's grown tremendously. But Herbert developed a piece of property. I mean, he developed a lot of property, but you remember that system that he has over there, that the apartment complex that's been mentioned to you? If you look at that, and I do have the layout of it, and I'll pass that out to you, but that is just a tremendous development that he started. And then he has had a retirement center there, the Sunpoint Place, and it sure was nice to be able to visit him many times over there while he was there. But, folks, the important thing is I'm asking you to continue what he started in that community. There's a great amount of development needs to take place. This development there would do nothing to hurt anybody that's spoken here tonight. It wouldn't hurt anybody that lives in that neighborhood, and I think it would be a wonderful thing. I believe if he was sitting here or sitting on the council, he'd vote for it, not for just 30 places there. I believe he'd vote for 42. And on behalf of Herbert, I would ask that you, if you could do it, even consider that. But I thank you for letting me come and just speak, and I want all of these people that have spoken different from me to remember, I would rather be your friend than your enemy. I'm not trying to offend anyone, but I think there's a lot to happen in that area, and as it develops, this developer will develop that side of the church, of the, of the street. The other side will be developed, and it won't cost taxpayers anything. There are a lot of pluses there, and if people wanted to buy a new home, those people from apartments and condominiums like this would come to you and buy your house and make the values go up. It'll make my values go up, make everybody's. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak, and just use your best judgment and have a vision.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? I don't think I see anyone else, so at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the discussion up for questions from the board.
I'll start with a question. Mr. Nichols, can you tell us by chance how tall the adjacent Foxdale Run property condominiums are?
I don't know. Thought my head.
Okay, do you have any stories?
I believe at least two.
Two stories?
At least.
I have one more, I have another question. I'm sure I'll have more as we go along. When's, when a project comes in at site plan, any project, not just this project, is, are there requirements at that time to have stubouts for future connectivity?
There are.
Okay, so it's perceivable that in the future, this wouldn't be the only ingress and egress that as development occurs, there could possibly in the future be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Muir, I think you're handling the first.
Did you have direction, do you have any, do we have any further direction from council as to specific things that they wanted to be addressed during our discussion? Sometimes they have particular, do we have a sense of that from council's meeting?
No specific direction, no.
I think, having been at that council meeting and heard the discussion, I think they were struggling with the very same things that we did and felt that there was room for additional compromise here, and they were hoping by sending it back to us that they would see some of that. I think, would that be a fair representation?
That would be fair.
I think so. Okay. Mr. Miller, I think you are next.
And some of these, or questions in response to some of what we heard at the public hearing, but can you, I think you had a slide on it, but could you confirm the buffer to the north, what the requirement there is?
Is that the slide?
Yes.
Okay. Right now, on the condominiums just to the north, there's already a 50-foot buffer, actually the 50-
It's just, it's a 50-foot buffer that was required at the PDD. So on the applicant's property, depending on the adjacent uses, it could be anywhere from 10 to 20-foot additional buffer.
Okay.
Of a type B buffer.
Thank you. And someone raised a, a point about streetlights, perhaps at the access point. Could you, I don't know if you're the right person, but is there, can you tell how streetlights get placed in town? Or maybe that's a, more traffic?
Mr. Jensen, address that.
Yes, we do, we do require street lighting, both internally and external to Old Apex Road. So they would be required to, by policy and code, require streetlight.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I still have some more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll wait my turn.
Go ahead.
Finish up while I have it. There was a question that we received by email from a citizen about emergency services, fire EMS, being able to turn around. Could you address how that?
There's a member of the fire department staff on the development review committee. So anytime there's a site plan submitted, they, they are looking to make sure there's provisions for their vehicles to be able to turn around and access the site.
Presumably that would be, if this, I know it's a site plan issue, but if this is, as everyone expects, sort of a single internal street, there would be some kind of turnaround concept.
Correct.
May I ask a question, sort of an addendum to that? When I went down into the Huntington Chase Street in the Foxdale Run subdivision, there's no cul-de-sac at the end of that. That's just a dead-end parking lot. And as a matter of fact, when I was trying to turn around to get out of there, I had to move into a parking space. And while I was getting ready to back out, there was another car coming in behind me and I didn't even know what the guy was doing and he was waiting for me to leave. So my question is, where was the fire department when they reviewed that site plan?
When that was reviewed a while back, that was actually reviewed in conjunction with the property to the west of the existing condominiums. There's supposed to be a loop road that went through. It was, where that road ends now is actually supposed to extend onto, onto the property to the west of it.
Now, whose property is that at this time?
It's under a different ownership than this property here. The condominiums are on, under a different ownership than that property to the west.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Miller.
Just a couple more. And this, I should have, this is another traffic one, I'm sorry. There was mention of reducing speed limits. Can the town reduce, could the town reduce the speed limit on Old Apex? Or how, how would that be considered?
No, the town can't directly reduce that. It's a state DOT road, so we would have to make a formal request to state DOT for reduction if, if, if we so choose to do so.
All right, thank you. Sorry to make you jump up and down. The last one I think I have at the moment is, Mr. Nichols, is there, there is a valid protest petition associated with this case?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
For now.
I've got a couple of questions and comments. The first question I have, I guess perhaps Mrs. Topp can answer best because this is from her memorandum to us. There's a reference to the fact that you met with NDOT, found that the road was going to be five lanes. Is she still here?
She is there.
Okay. Sorry. In your memorandum to us, you're talking about your meeting with NDOT. And you outline the fact that Old Apex Road is going to become five lanes. There'll be a 91-foot right-of-way. And then you make the statement, additional right-of-way will be required adjacent to the right property along Old Apex Road. What do you mean by that?
Right now, there's not sufficient right-of-way. So as you, as typically seen in developments, we'd have to provide additional right-of-way.
Okay, so this is in lieu of what exists?
Yes, sir.
It'll just be expanded?
Yes, sir.
That's what your comment was? I sat on this property from 7:45 to 8:45 this morning. This is for the benefit of members of the board. My observations were that the southbound traffic, that is, traffic leaving the intersection of West Chatham and heading southbound, was definitely at 45 miles per hour by the point where I was sitting, which is where the, the sort of two-lane section of Old Apex Road ends, adjacent to the veterinary clinic, and then becomes the right property. The northbound traffic tended to slow down more as they approached the red light. Or they were doing 45 miles an hour at least if they saw the green light because once they come out of this blind turn, they're really kind of going down a hill. There were cars traveling about every 30 seconds. So if somebody was coming out of the access route, either left or right onto Old Apex, and again, this is during high-traffic volume, this was also during school season because I saw four school buses go by. They'd have about a 20 to 30-second gap between the traffic that was going either eastbound or westbound. When I stood on the property, I could see the oncoming traffic from the north part of Old Apex Road. And based on Mrs. Topp's comment and another comment that I heard earlier, I would imagine that some of this, this growth would be taken back and would improve that vision. But the citizens of Maryland Circle are right. This is a blind curve that exists immediately adjacent to the right property and where this lake begins. And I used to live in North Raleigh. I was in a subdivision of two-acre homes. And I had a very similar access entrance way to this subdivision. So it doesn't matter whether you've got low-density development, high-density development, you can still have a poor access road. And what we had to deal with was a blind curve on our left and a hillside where the traffic was blind coming up over that hillside. And I can appreciate the fact that there's some concern. What I do know is we never had a traffic accident there. Maybe we were lucky, maybe we weren't, but we never had a traffic accident. So I just wanted to make those comments because my concern when I saw this the last time was the fact that I just could not understand how this was going to be a convenient and safe egress situation. From my experience this morning, I would back off a little bit on my concern as respects somebody trying to get out and at least seeing traffic coming from the north. But any traffic heading north from the south, you're not going to see it until it's virtually upon you when you come out of that space. And that's what I observed.
Other questions? Mr. Shaw.
First, as far as parking, assuming that there'll be times when one of those 30 homes will have something going on attracting people from outside, how many additional parking places not assigned to particular homes, that is, people's driveways, will there be?
The ordinance requires one additional space for each four units.
So one additional for each four units is the amount?
A quarter of a space per unit, correct?
Uh huh.
For overflow parking.
Okay. And then the other question is perhaps Mr. Jensen might want to step up. Is there any timeframe that's been announced and funded at all for improvements to Old Apex Road?
There's, there's no publicly funded commitments made at this point in time for, for that stretch of road. Either the town of Cary or NC DOT has it in their capital improvement program or transportation improvement program. So there isn't anything identified. So it should, it'll be, it'll be a ways out unless, again, council has that discretion to consider at their budget preparations. So, but I do know that state DOT doesn't have any commitments at this time for it either.
Okay, so at this time, there are no specific plans for improving it? There's just a wish list for what we would like to see done?
It's part of our long-range transportation plan. It's, it's a planning guide to help not only the town grow, but again, as development comes into town, such as anyone that wants to develop along a thoroughfare such as this, they would be, gives them a guidance as to what they need to improve the roadway to. As, as a lot of thoroughfares in Cary were constructed as development occurred.
So it would require either DOT or Cary deciding to fund it or the rest of this property along here being developed?
It could, yeah, again, it could either be a, a public venture-type project where we do a long stretch roadway or it could be, in some cases, piecemealed as you go along.
Uh huh.
Correct.
Where it goes in and out, widens and narrows.
Right, correct.
Back in 2000, spring of 2011, council approved it on May 12th of 2011, rezoning directly across the street and in commercial.
Correct.
And I believe the report stated that based on the ITE manual, it would generate 93 a.m. and 112 p.m. peak hour trips as a result of that addition, that, that would be additional to what's there now. How does that stand? Is that still the situation?
Well, the zoning case was approved, so they, they have a maximum build-out that they can build to. I think at a square footage maximum, they could build to. There hasn't been any, to my knowledge, any formal submission of a site plan for that property yet. But they have had a pre-application to look at developing that property, but nothing has really been submitted formal. So, but again, as they, as they come in, they'll be limited to that threshold that was in the zoning case. And that zoning case also outlined that they'd be doing improvements along Old Apex Road. They'd be widening it, their portion of the road frontage out to half of a five-lane section, similar as any other property would along the corridor.
But that would just be the section in front of them?
In, in front of them, yeah. Again, and with their access as well, NC DOT will review it as well as the town of Cary. And if there needs to be a left-turn lane provided for safety reasons for access to that property, as well as the property that, that we're talking about tonight, if a left-turn lane is required by DOT, then, then it will have to be installed for not only traffic moving purposes, but for safety purposes as well.
Okay, do you, I know that probably has not been a traffic analysis report, traffic impact analysis on this. Do you know from any other thing what the traffic on Apex is, the vehicles per hour during the peak hour?
I don't, I don't have vehicles per hour. I believe that the, the daily count on that roadway, I think exceeds 10,000 vehicles per day. That's, that is getting up, up, up there as far as two-lane roadway is concerned.
Okay.
So.
And that is without, of course, the already-approved change in front?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I believe that's the questions I have.
Other questions?
What is that intersection just to the north, graded there at Chatham and Old Apex?
That I don't have any readily available. Haven't had, at least in my limited time with the town, I've had too many complaints about that intersection. It seems to be running fairly efficiently. It does have multiple lanes approaching each one. There were some improvements that were also made by the apartment complex on the north side of West Chatham Street that made some improvements as well to Old Apex. There is also some potential there on the corner of West Chatham and, and Old Apex that, that may actually add even additional improvements to that, that intersection. So I don't, I don't have that level service data to you right now, but I believe it's probably running pretty close to that level, level service CRD. But we can certainly give that information to you if you feel, feel necessary.
And if that parcel to the east builds out, would we expect to see all five lanes completed with that build-out?
The property on the opposite side of the street, if they were developed, they would be responsible for their, their half of the five-lane section. And obviously, if, if the right property does develop, they'll be responsible for the other half of the five lanes. So there'll be a short segment in there that will have a five, five-lane section in it, yeah.
So that could happen before the capital funds?
It should probably take you pretty close to being all the way up to the intersection with, with West Chatham. There may be a little bit of transition in there, but, but yeah.
Okay.
Other questions?
I do have one more. Stormwater management was, was raised during the public hearing and I'm going to attempt to paraphrase or maybe you can confirm that. If that property develops at all in any fashion, whether it's this or something else, the developer cannot allow the stormwater conditions running off that property to be any worse.
Correct, they'll be required to treat the stormwater.
It has to be contained on-site. And I know it kind of seems counterintuitive, but Cary's regulations are such that the stormwater cannot get worse as a result of development for the adjoining. Is that a fair assessment?
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
I do have one more for Mr. Jensen. The road is somewhat wider between the subject property and the intersection to the north. Of course, they would widen it as part of development of the right property. But am I correct in assuming that there would be then a sudden narrowing of the road at the southern boundary, approximately at the southern boundary of the right property near the, that lake?
It, it could be a sudden, you know, cutoff of the curb and gutter and its ultimate widening. However, you know, for lane shifts and everything, we would, it would have to be a safe and gradual transition. So there may be some additional off-site widening to transition the lane, lanes back to existing. So that certainly could be, could be some minor widening there. But we probably won't, we won't see a full five-lane section until a lot more of the roadway is widened to the south. We'll probably be starting to transition, you know, from the, from the ultimate lanes we have at, 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 at West Chatham Street as we come through this. We'll, we'll get, the markings may change a little bit in order to transition back down to the two-lane section. So it, it won't be a, there may be a, a sudden drop, but again, we're going to transition that safely for the two, for the, to keep traffic, two-way traffic.
Yeah. It would be one lane going, one southbound lane south of the right property?
They'll probably be for a period of time, there'll be some unused pavement out there because again, we can't just carry two lanes of traffic going in each direction and all of a sudden just stop it.
Right.
We could actually force a, you know, there are a number of ways, but we could, on one of those lanes going southbound, we could actually force a right turn into this development if we wanted to. But again, that hasn't really been fully vetted or, or, or looked at, but we'll make sure that that, that occurs with DOT. And the plan's, you know, has only one lane probably transitioning back down to existing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Muir.
Sorry again, I know they're not sequential. If there were a device placed in the middle of that road that prohibited left-hand turns out of that property, can that be compelled by the town or state DOT? Is that something the developer would offer up as part of the site plan when they bring the site plan in? You know, I've seen that kind of popping up in additional places throughout town and, and different areas. So would that, would that be an option?
It's certainly, if we cannot, or I shouldn't say we, if the applicant cannot provide safe access to the site where site distance may be an issue in one direction or the other, there is always the, the latitude on behalf of the town or NC DOT to limit that driveway as far as the, the number of movements that can be taken out of there. It could be forced to a ride-in, ride-out situation. In that particular case, we would, our standard as well as NC DOTs would be to channelize the entrance to force the ride-in, ride-out. the entrance to force the ride-in, ride-out, as well as we, we, our standard in town of Cary is to actually put a small monolithic island of at least two to four feet out in the middle of the roadway to make sure that residents can't make a illegal left turn into the site or, or, or a left-out, so.
Is this a place that may be appropriate, I mean, with study, for those left ends that you see coming through those islands?
There certainly is a possibility that maybe the, the movement is the, is the left-outs the problem, so, but they're maybe perfectly fine from a site-distance standpoint for a left turn, and so we would have to work out some channelization to make that all work. Might be a little bit complicated, but we have a couple, several instances around town where, where we have that type of scenario, absolutely. But those will all be looked at during, during their, during their site plan review. We'll, we'll be reviewing that with DOT as well, but, but access has got to be safe, and we may be regulating movements coming in and out of that, that driveway.
Can I ask you to clarify what you mean by if the applicant hasn't addressed that? Are you in essence saying this would be definitely adjudicated at the time of site plan review, or are you talking about the fact that site plan review goes through, things start to go south, and then it gets looked at?
Now, we, during the site plan application, their, their designers will design the entrance way in accordance with state and town of Cary standards. In those standards, we have geometrics for the configuration of the driveway, and we also have established design standards for site distance based on travel speed along the main roadway. So they'll need to make sure that vegetation's cut back, that, that, there's, there's adequate sign of light or line of sight, excuse me, to, to make movements in and out. If they don't have those, then we may start restricting those type movements where we can't provide the site distance necessary for them to, to make a safe movement in and out. So those are established, so it's, it's upon them and their designers to, to design us an access so that, that meets all those standards, and if they don't, then we will, either the state or town of Cary will, will be regulating those. But we review all that, all that as part to be, as part of a site plan submission, that they have to prove that they've provided, met those standards.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
You bring up one point about the right-in, right-out, or at least the, the right-out. If it's either required that it be right-out, or if drivers on their own decide that they cannot make a left turn and therefore must make a right turn, how far would they go and where would they go to make a U-turn?
That's a good, that's a good question. I think, you know, given, given the short frontage, yeah, you, you're going to have probably, you know, people making a right turn out, maybe some unintended consequences of them cutting through maybe another neighborhood to get, you know, make a right turn out to get to a, to a place north of here. The same thing as people coming from the south, they may be making, may have to make a U-turn somehow up around the, the West Chatham and, and Apex, they may need to, they'll have to find a way to, to do that, and that is a, that is a unintended consequence for doing that type of regulated movement, but it's much safer not to allow access there when we know that site distance is going to be issued, where they could probably go to another location that may not be as convenient, but it's maybe a lot safer for them to make. So it's, it's a balance we have to trade off, and safety always kind of, kind of wins over on that one.
I know making left turns would be, could in some situations be very dangerous, but would making U-turns be, while not as dangerous, at least to a certain extent, involve its own danger?
Yeah, I think if we went to a ride-in, ride-out situation, it's, it's going to be a, a challenge for the subdivision, you know, again, that's a marketing issue, it, will residents want ride-in, ride-out, and, and purchase properties in there? There are a lot of examples around Cary where, where people do that, and that's fine, and they, and they find, they find a way to work it, work it out in their, you know, and to get into their neighborhood. But it's a decision, like I say, that, that the home buyer's going to have to make whether they want to live in that neighborhood or not with that type of access.
I'm thinking about danger to people who live in other areas who, who would be driving down Old Apex or up Old Apex. I think that's the last one.
Anyone else? I, I have the benefit of having some great questions from the rest of the board, and most of my questions were answered. I would like to get a clarification, a little bit on what the folks that are in the condominiums to the north would expect. I understand that they have a buffer on their side of the property line that I believe you said was 50 feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I, I understand that often that buffer can be opaque, or it could be not so opaque, because things happen over the years.
Correct.
And I think I heard you say that the buffer on this side of the property line could be as little as 10 feet?
Yes.
Is that correct?
And that's a requirement by the ordinance for the use of the condominiums and the use of townhomes when they're adjacent to each other, there's really only a requirement for 20-foot type B buffer between the two uses. So you've already exceeded that on the north side with a 50-foot buffer that the P D D required.
Okay, and that 10-foot buffer, does it have any density of vegetation requirements?
There'll be plantings, and it's only required to be a type B buffer, so it'd be...
It's only a type B.
Correct.
And I, I tried to understand the topology of this property, but I didn't do a very good job. My understanding is that the buildings that are adjacent to the apartments would be kind of up the hill from them, right?
I'm not sure how that'll play out once it's finally graded and everything's constructed, so I believe right, right now, the property's a little bit...
I'm trying to imagine something that's hard to imagine, and that is, what would the actual effective buffering be for folks that are in those existing units to the north?
It's hard to say right now without, you know, a final construction-level drawing in front of us.
That's unfortunate. I thought that was going to be the answer, but I had to push it. Are there other questions from anyone? In that case, it's time for somebody to make a motion.
I'll have the motion that we forward 12 R E Z O one to council with a recommendation for denial.
And I'll suck at that.
I'll speak up, I'll make a...
Yeah, please, somebody.
I've got to say, this is one of the more difficult cases that have come before me in the almost six and a half years that I've been on planning and zoning board, and not only did I come into this earlier today not having a decis, not, not a decision, but not having anything well thought out yet in my mind as to how I thought it would go, but also throughout the presentation and the questions, I would say, I, I wavered back and forth. I'm going to support the motion. I think there's more conditions that could be made. I think there are questions about height restrictions, I think there are questions about right-in, right-out access that can be, and not saying that that needs to be the, the conditions, but I think there are other conditions that could be made that could get us closer. I think that the residents have, that the property owners have a right to develop their property. I look at this, and you'll have to excuse me, I'm dealing with a cold right now, so I might not be all together with it, but I think the, the property owners have a right to deal, have a right to develop their property, but I'm just not sure this is quite where it needs to be yet, and I will support the motion.
I'll just make a couple of comments. First, as far as traffic, that was my big concern last time I was here, it, that has not changed. So there, I feel the same way. Something that did change was my concern about parking. I don't think that eight spaces spread throughout along now, our road is sufficient for overflow parking, and I found out at 8:00 this morning what it's like when someone parks on Old Apex Road. I couldn't resist that. But that would be a concern, people, whether it's legal or not, will park, and it's not just in the morning when it was pretty light, but at night would be more likely if they can't find a parking place within that when they're visiting someone else. So that is an additional concern in addition to the traffic that was concerned before. So I feel the same way that I did last time I was here.
Other comments?
I'll speak briefly to why I made the motion. I actually believe that the traffic concerns are not a really big deal. I think they can be managed with the left-turn prohibition, the right-in and the right-out, but I think that when we see this kind of opposition from the neighbors to a project, we have to ask ourselves, is this really an excellent, excellent project? Is this the kind of project that we all would be proud of? And I just don't see that in the details yet. So, you know, I don't know where it'll go from here, if it'll continue on to council, but, but I do, I, I find it unfortunate that there's not access that can, can be negotiated and that some deal can't come between the owners to the north, so that that access can be on the Chatham Street side, because I think that would be a lot safer. And I do think that, that there is some context with surrounding properties. I mean, the surrounding properties are, are a fairly high density and have a parking lot. So, so like Julia, Ms. Rudy, it was very, you know, back and forth, but I do think that there's a higher threshold here that we need to look at, and it didn't need it.
Other comments?
I just will make the same comment, basically repeat what you said. If there was another entrance and egress to this property from Chatham Street through the property at the north, I would be more comfortable, but I'm not very comfortable with having a singular access and egress in the property on Old Apex Road. I lived on Old Apex Road in 1982 in Holland Avenue, and even at that time, it was sometimes difficult in 1981, '82 to get in, get out of the, on the Old Apex Road, and so I'm sure the traffic has gone up, and it will be very difficult for the people living in this property to be able to safely get in and get out. So for that reason, I'll going to, I'm going to support the resolution.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm going to vote against the motion, and to be brief, last time, I had some concerns. I think the developer has addressed some of those, going from the original 42 to 30. I mean, from what I'm understanding, you know, they're, they're within a transitional residential six-unit density. We're talking about property on one side that has 10 units per acre density, now we're at 5.6. The interior parking, I agree that, that I don't think the traffic has, has risen to the level of concern for me that it might for some others, because even built out completely to single-family, you're going to have 28 to 30 a.m. and p.m. peak trips, which I think is what the estimate for this is. And there's a lot of stuff that I think can be addressed in site plan and needs to be addressed in site plan, but I'm struggling with the fact that this isn't site planned, and so for me to look at a proposed zoning classification, I find this property and its location with contingent property for the conditional use zoning to be appropriate. So I'll be voting against the motion.
Anyone else? I'm going to support the motion, but I do it with sort of a, a fair amount of yin and yang to this. Brent seems, or excuse me, Mr. Miller seems to always steal some of my questions before I get a chance to ask them, so I'm going to steal one of his comments tonight. I think we made this at the last public hearing, where you said that, you know, if it's kind of ouchy enough for both sides, it usually means it's a good thing, and I just don't feel this is ouchy enough for both sides yet. I, I personally think that the traffic issue may be solved by some good engineering, but I don't think it's going to make any difference whether there are 12 houses on this site or 30 townhomes. As I mentioned about my previous experience, I was in a pod up in North Raleigh, we had a difficult entrance and egress, just like this site had, and as I say, I never saw an accident at that intersection, and that was not engineered by the, the town of Raleigh, it was actually Wake County. Now, just moving down the road, Durant and Six Forks had a flashing light, I saw four teenagers get hit by a flatbed trailer truck because of a hill, a rise, and a high school student making a bad judgment and turning out into the oncoming truck, and three of those four high school students were killed, and I was the second car back from that light. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, bad judgment can sometimes happen even in better circumstances. I just think that this thing needs to be a little less dense. I don't think the, the traffic situation is, is that critical, but I do think that the lake and the blind curve, if it could be engineered to be a little bit more straight, that would be great, but I, I also don't think that we're here to guarantee a maximum return to a property owner. And in this particular case, the, the plan says low to medium density. Doesn't have to be medium, doesn't have to be low, could be something in between, and I don't think we're there yet. Other comments? Mr. Miller?
Oh, wait, and Brent's fine. I agree with many of the comments that have been, that have already been made. I, I went back and forth on this one. I think it's very difficult, it certainly is improved from, from the previous time we saw this, and I think the things that weighed most heavily for me were Mr. Martin's comment about vision, I thought was very good, and it made me think, and, and I recall a development, I think it's in Southern Cary, it was a few years ago, it's oriented north to south, it's very similar. I think it's off Penny Road, but my memory often fails me. It's another very thin lot, a very long, narrow lot, it ended up with one long cul-de-sac and some relatively dense housing, and I, I don't think it ended up being the vision of, of, you know, the kind of development that Ms. Muir said that we really want to see in Cary. That, and I agree with Mr. Rogers, the, the density, although reduced, I think is probably still too high. This is L D R to M D R, it's a range of 1 to 8, 5.6 is still, still up there, and as Ms. Muir said, we still have a valid protest petition, so I, I think it's out of balance in terms of the property owner's rights versus the community, the neighbors' issues, and what's good for the community.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, one, one option you might consider is you could table this, if there's some concerns that the board feels that could be addressed through additional conditions, that rather than sending it on to council, that's something you could, just wanted to point that out, that's something you might want to, or you'd be able to consider.
I'm going to ask the person to your left.
Okay.
We're within our, because I know this has been moving around a little bit, right?
That's correct, and I was standing up here to make a different point, but they go together. You have options if Ms. Muir were to withdraw her motion or make a friendly amendment to table it. We'd also ask as a procedural matter for the record that Ms. Muir amend her motion to read the full text of our recommended motion language, and that's the point that I wanted to make. So either way, we'd like to see a little bit of amendment to the language of the motion if, if, if the motion is to recommend denial, to read the full text of the language, if Mr. Shaw's agreeable to that. And then the point is you do have the option to table the item.
So do we have any confidence, because this has gone back and forth a couple times now. If we table it, are we just delaying something, that we're going to get the same thing back in a month? Maybe I could ask the developer's representative, if, if we table this one, are we going to see anything different, or are you just going to come back and ask for the same question?
Well, I think we heard a few things tonight. Height, I know in talking with one of the representatives of the property, I don't know if we can, I guess it's something that we'll have to talk to staff, meaning planning and engineering, in terms of what they, what they might take from access issues, you know, in terms of what we may... in terms of what we may or may not be able to offer, that they would actually take as conditions. I know in years past, we actually had conditions that addressed access. I'm not sure how far we can go with that anymore. There were comments about parking. We could take a closer look at the, a layout and, and actually address more parking spaces.
So, you're saying you would, you could do some additional things?
Yes, sir. After listening tonight, I think what we would like to do, given, which is why I stood up and said something to the person next to me, given the things that were said tonight, we would like the opportunity one more time to listen to what you had to say and see what we come back with. I would think from this conversation that we're having, next time, I would think you would vote one way or the other, but I think we would like one more opportunity to, to take what you said tonight, look at the plan. Again, the town doesn't want to see a site plan, but we can go into more detail with laying out the site to see what we can, we can do, and then come back to you in a month, if you're willing to.
Do you think, do you can address, would you expect to address density, number of units at all?
We will talk about that again.
Okay.
I mean, we, we, again, I know, I know we're far apart from the 12 to 15 to the 30, and not that, and I can't speak what you would want, but, but that is something that, that I don't know, you know, how much further room there is. I mean, we started at 42, now we're down to 30. I think we made it clear at the neighborhood meeting that 12 to 15 wouldn't work either. Where that, you know, where that is, I don't know. I think from my, from speaking personally, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough zoning case. You know, I've been, I've been doing this for a long time on both sides. This is a tough one. Will we be able to reach consensus? I do not know, but I know we would like the opportunity to, to come back to you with a different request, if you would so allow us.
Well, it kind of falls to Ms. Muir. It's your motion. Do you want to stand by your motion, or would you like to give the applicant another?
Let me ask staff a question. Do they have the option to make changes again between here and town council?
They do.
But there won't be a public hearing at town council on those changes? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, their only opportunity for another public hearing, so we can get feedback on those changes, would be to do that here? Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Mr. Shaw, are you okay?
I'll go along with that.
Okay, then, do we have another motion?
I'll, I'll motion that we table 12 REZ 01 Wright property until next month.
I'll second.
Discussion on that?
Just a question is, is for the applicant, I guess, 30 days, was that the timeframe you were thinking? I mean...
Oh, yeah, until further.
Yeah.
Until the...
I mean, until next month is fine, if that, if the applicant thinks that that works, so.
Well, I would make a point, the next time this comes before is, I think we have to vote. This thing has been bouncing around like a tennis ball, and I think whatever it is we would see in the next meeting, that's got to be the last time we let this happen.
Well, and speaking to my second, my second is for the 30 days, because we will have a new board that will have to bring up the speed on this if we go past next month's meeting.
That was part of what I was, right. I agree.
That's a great point. So, we have a motion and a second?
And may I make a comment? I would just like to see, not only from the developer, but also from the neighborhood, some working together, a lot of working together, and just a lot of, a lot of listening and hearing each other out.
Thank you. In that case, I will call the motion. All those in favor of the motion, as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously? I understand. Yes, we'll take a five-minute break. We will return promptly at 8:30, please. Okay, I'd like to call us back in session. Appreciate you all giving us a break. Our next case for a public hearing is the Bailey Park, 12 CPA 02. Okay, clarification, is this a public hearing or is it not?
Yes.
It is a public hearing. We have a, no, we have a revised agenda.
Sorry.
Thank you very much for being patient.
Good evening. This case is a request by Jerry Turner and Associates to change the future land use plan designation of 2.61 acres located at 133 Bailey Park Lane in North Cary. The subject parcel is located off of Evans Road at the end of the future Bailey Park Lane, which is currently unbuilt. Cary Parkway is to the north, Maynard Road is to the south, and you can also see Evans Estates here, Chesapeake Landing PDD here. This is a zoomed-in view of the subject parcel. The future Bailey Park Lane is here, and you can see the subject parcel is at the end of that future cul-de-sac. The Chesapeake Landing condominiums, you can just see here, and this is where the future Bailey's Creek subdivision will be here. That was approved in 2010. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of this CPA request, and the property was posted and advertised according to ordinance requirements. The subject property outlined in yellow is a portion of a larger associated rezoning request. That's case 12 REZ 07, thus depicted by the blue dotted line, and that rezoning case has paused until this comprehensive plan amendment request is decided. Cary's GIS maps indicate two stream buffers impact this property. Evans Road is designated as a major thoroughfare on Cary's transportation plan, with five lanes, curb and gutter, and sidewalks, and a 91-foot right-of-way, and all planned improvements are complete. The subject site is 3/4 of a mile from a C-Trans stop on Maynard Road, serving routes 1 and 2, bus routes 1 and 2. This slide shows proposed greenways and trails in the vicinity, none of which touch the subject property. The existing zoning for the subject parcel is R40. And this is the current land use map plan for the area, showing that the subject's property is currently designated for low-density residential, which is defined as 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre detached, single-family. The applicant is requesting that the plan designation for the property be changed from low-density to medium-density residential, defined as 3 to 8 dwelling units per acre. An initial public hearing was held on this plan amendment request at the June 14th Town Council meeting. No citizens spoke. And the land development ordinance states that proposals to amend the comprehensive plan should address one or more of the four conditions shown here. As detailed in the staff report, staff believes the requested plan amendment does address the first condition, a change in projections, projections or assumptions from which, from those on which the comprehensive plan is based. The subject parcel was separated from the adjacent planned low-density neighborhood Bailey's Creek by a stream and required stream buffer. This physical and visual separation provides opportunity for a natural transition between residential densities and, at the same time, limits access to the subject parcel from the east. In addition, property adjoining the subject parcel on its west and south sides is designated for medium density. This slide illustrates those points. You can see here, the stream buffer here separates the future Bailey's Creek. The access to Bailey's Creek is here, and there won't be access across the stream, but rather from the west. Also, you can see that the properties on the west and south of the subject property are designated for medium-density residential now. Considering the natural transition and the limited access created by the stream and stream buffer, staff believes the parcel is more logically associated with the medium-density designated property to its south and west, and recommends approval of this comprehensive plan amendment. This concludes staff's presentation of the comprehensive plan amendment. Now, the applicant's representative will present comments about the land use plan amendment.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Willie Hood. I'm with Jerry Turner and Associates. We'd like to commend the staff on their analysis and presentation of this minor amendment that we're proposing. We, of course, do agree with their recommendation for approval. We believe what this request does is put the, uses the stream buffer between the single-family area of Bailey's Creek and the, and the proposed medium-density area in a, in a logical place, and we believe that this was the intent of the comprehensive plan in the first place. I'll be available for any questions.
At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have anyone else? Anyone in the building that would like to address us on this case? Anyone at all? Seeing no one approach, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for board questions.
Just for clarification, I, I recall the Bailey's Creek discussions of some years ago, and as I recall, one of the major issues was the access and lack of connectivity that really is caused by the stream buffer, I think. And so, the, what, what would seem on a map, obvious thought of connecting what's called Bailey Park Lane in a needed way would require a stream crossing, which is why it's really impractical. Is that a reasonable assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Are we worn out? No, not yet.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
A motion that we take 12 CPA 02, let me make sure I get this right, that the board forward case, 12 CPA, oh, wait, 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 02 to town council with recommendation for approval to amend the comprehensive plan. Is that good? Okay.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Who spoke first there, which one wants it? Ms. Miller, you got it. Discussion.
I'll say I'll support the motion for the reasons that staff and the applicant outlined. When it's time for rezoning, I would just hope that maybe we don't have to go for the very maximum end of the MDR. I'm not sure that it supports, you know, 20 units, but we're talking about the comprehensive plan amendment now, so.
Other comments?
I was gonna make a very similar comment, but it's already been made. I'll support the motion, and thank Mr. Miller. I hope that it will be far less than the upper end of MDR. And I will note that connectivity with a needed way, I can see is a serious problem, and it won't happen, but that means a lot of traffic on Bailey Park Lane connecting with Evans Road, and potential problem to consider at the zoning stage.
I appreciate we have a motion before us, but I am just curious. We have MDR to the south, we have MDR to the west, we have HTR to the north and the northeast. Why did that parcel right in the middle there end up being LDR?
Perhaps the applicant can answer.
Well, I understand it's what the applicant wanted, but I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around.
I do have the answer. It was originally MDR, but when a part of Bailey's Creek, which is an approved subdivision that has not been built there where a needed way is, when it was contemplated to be developed, a portion of that property was zoned MD, was connected to this one, and it was zoned medium, I mean, called for medium-density, so they requested that it go to low-density. And so, they should've chopped it in the middle and said, let's let this side go low-density and keep this medium-density, but instead, the whole track went low-density, and now we're asking to put it back like it was. Simple enough, right?
Do we have any other questions? We have a motion with invalid second. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries nine to zero. Or eight to zero, I apologize, yes. And next, we have 12 CPA 03 Village at the Park.
Yes, next for your consideration is a request to amend the town's comprehensive plan for three properties totaling 39.7 acres in northwest Cary. This is an aerial of the property, and just to give you some context, a larger context, this is Durham, as you head north on NC 55, and RTP is here, Chatham County is here, and Durham County is here, so you're up in the corner of Wake County. The site is located on the west side of Green Level Church Road, immediately south of Wake Road and west of Kit Creek Road. RTP is located approximately one-fourth mile east of the site. In this zoomed-in view, you can see Austin Ridge Elementary in the center of the photo, and subject properties are outlined in yellow. You can also see the Chancery Village and Vista at the Park apartment complexes on the east side of Green Level Church Road. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the rezoning request, and public hearing ads were run in the newspaper. At present, the three properties have a mix of ORD and R40 zoning. The three properties are not part of the adjacent Village at the Park PDD, which is the purple, shows the PDD. The subject parcels are also located within a mixed-use overlay zoning district, and that's shown by the pink outline. This slide shows potential stream and urban transition buffers and floodplain in the area. According to USGS maps, there is a perennial stream and 100-foot stream buffer along the boundary with the elementary school. Final stream determinations were made prior to the development plan approval. This slide shows existing and planned greenways and multi-use trails near the site. Multi-use trails are planned along both sides of Green Level Church Road up to Kit Creek Road, with constructed portions adjacent to the two apartment complexes and the school. The trails will provide direct future connections to RTP via the Kit Creek Road Trail which will connect with RTP's trail system. According to the town's transportation plan, Green Level Church Road is designated as a four-lane median-divided thoroughfare. Wake Road is designated as a collector road with two travel lanes, and NC Highway 55 in this area is designated as a six-lane median-divided facility. The nearest transit service is currently provided by Triangle Transit Route 311 on NC 55, approximately one-fourth mile east of the site. There is no existing C-Trans bus service in this area, however, the long-range C-Trans service expansion plan currently envisions future service along Green Level Church Road adjacent to the site. This site is located within Cary's Northwest Area Plan. This slide shows the land use plan map as it currently exists. The entire site is currently recommended for office institutional uses, as are the properties north and south of the site. The site is located within a mixed-use neighborhood activity center, which is outlined in the violet-colored boundary. That coincides with the mixed-use overlay district zoning. The applicants are requesting that the subject area be redesignated as MDR, medium-density, south of Kit Creek Road, and this is the, this will be the extension of Kit Creek here, and mixed, MXD, north of Kit Creek Road. MDR refers to housing at 3 to 8 dwelling units per acre, and might include single-family detached patio homes or townhomes. A mixed-use designation includes both residential and non-residential uses. Because the site falls within a designated activity center, the properties need to attain at least 3 dwelling units per acre, which is why the applicant's asked for MDR. The Northwest Area Plan also includes some map notes that provide additional recommendations for the area. This slide shows the land use plan map notes as they currently exist. There are three map notes, numbers 2, 3, and 4 labeled on the slide. The geographic area that each note applies to is outlined in the bold purple boundary lines. It's difficult to see, but this will be important as we move forward, so... This boundary is for 3, this boundary is for 4, and this is for 2. The applicants are requesting some changes to these three notes or to their boundaries. I'll describe each proposed change in turn. First, the applicant's request that map note 2 be moved off the subject area. This is because they propose to move notes 3 and 4 to cover the portion currently covered by note 2. So you can see that the boundary of note 2 has been moved off, and just now applies to this area, because note 4 will cover this area and the remainder note 3 will cover. Proposed. Next, the applicant's request that the boundary for map note 3 be extended to cover the entire portion of the site south of Kit Creek Road. In addition, text changes to note 3 are proposed. So in addition to the boundary change, there are some text changes that go with note 3, and these are the text changes. New text is shown underlined, and text to be deleted is shown struck through. Text that has changed since the council hearing is in yellow. That word "will," "was," "should" transition, and since the council meeting discussions with the applicant and surrounding property owners have changed that to "will" transition. Finally, the applicant's request that the boundary for map note 4 be extended to cover the mixed-use portion of the subject site north of Kit Creek Road. In addition, text changes to note 4 are proposed. And these are the changes proposed to the text of note 4. New text, again, is shown underlined, and text to be deleted is shown struck through. The changes are intended to ensure that the mixed portion of the subject site will not include HDR, high-density residential multifamily housing, but rather be limited to MDR to help form a more gradual density transition to the west. At the council public hearing, two people spoke, expressing concerns about uses and densities that might occur on the western side of the site and the transition to very low-density residential to the west. Applicants met with those citizens on July 17 and August 17, and staff was in attendance, and revisions to the application were agreed upon, and resulted in the changes you see tonight. These are the changes. Revision to proposed text change for note 3, "will" became, "should" became "will." Extension of map note 4 to the mixed area with some text changes, and removal of map note 2 from the site due to the extension of notes 3 and 4. Staff has analyzed the site and believes the following points are important to consider. The office market at the site has not emerged as we had hoped. The south half of the site lacks thoroughfare exposure for Class A office. Retail mix has not occurred to help draw office development. Elementary school, the elementary school has used the planned medium-density residential in the area that was there before, so there's no remaining medium-density. The addition of the schools, there is the elementary school, and I believe the 9th Grade Center is also planned for that area, have changed the nature of the appropriate uses and market demand in this activity center, and there has been loss of some office land. As you know, the LDO includes four criteria that should be considered when evaluating requests to amend the comprehensive plan, and those are listed here. Staff feels that review criteria 1 and 2 are affected, and they are summarized in the yellow text. Staff believes that the planet, well, knows that the plan assumptions are 10 years old, and the office market demand that was projected for this area has not occurred. And number 2, schools were not anticipated in the 2002 Northwest Area Plan, and bringing them in removes the medium-density from the activity center and increase the demand for residential. Staff feels that on balance, the proposed amendments are reasonable, and we recommend that the board forward the case to council with a recommendation for approval. This concludes staff's presentation, but before beginning the public hearing, the applicant will comment on the case.
Hello again, Glenda Top with Glenda's Top and Associates. I'm here representing the property owners, and staff has done such a great job, I'm afraid to say anything to confuse the situation, but I will say a few things. As is shown on the map, the current land use is office and institutional, and we're asking for MDR and MXD. Just briefly, as staff pointed out, the removal of note number 2, note number 3, at the Town Council meeting, there was some concern with the word "should" and not "will." And we have inserted the word "will" into the note, and that was to ensure that single-family detached would go along the common boundary to the west. And again, this was important to council, and it was also an important point to the neighbors who spoke at the council meeting and that we've been meeting with. Again, on note number 4, there was concern about adding additional, or having additional high-density be in that area, so the note was revised to say for mixed-use areas north of Kit Creek Road and west of Green Level Church Road, any resident uses should be limited to medium-density housing, and that was to prevent, as staff pointed out, high-density residential. Again, this was a change that we made after our discussions with the residents in the area. And just going briefly over, while we feel that our request is appropriate, we feel that the development patterns that have occurred in the area have changed. Again, the plan assumptions are 10 years old, the office market has not occurred in this area, partly due to the fact of the lack of the necessary road exposure, and also, the thoroughfare network is not really set up for the office market. When the area was originally planned, schools were not envisioned here. As we know, schools have now come into the area. This also has changed the land use patterns for the area. Currently, with the school being there, there is no MDR in the matrix for the Village at the Park Activity Center. So, one thing that happens with this amendment, MDR will be in the matrix, and we feel that it will be a better mix than not, and there is a desire for there to be some medium-density development in this area, particularly since it's within an activity center. Again, in meeting with the neighbors, one thing they do not want to see, they do not want to see office uses, and they really don't want to see what could also occur under ORD, which is, a good portion of this land is zoned ORD, which not only would allow office, but also allows research and development uses that could come straight to site plan. So, again, there is a desire on their part for the land use plan to change, and for something other than those types of uses to occur. We do feel that the changes, the conditions, do address the concerns both raised by council and the residents. We work closely with the property owners, we've met with them individually, we've also had a meeting with the property owners and staff, so there would be a clear understanding of what the notes read, and everybody is on the same page. And we would like to thank the residents for their willingness to work with us, and pleased to report that the residents do agree with these changes, and that they support the proposed CPA request. And we also explained to them that, again, this is only the CPA, and that when we come back, because we're in an activity center, we will be asking, of course, for a rezoning, and it will also include a preliminary development plan, where they will be able to see what we have in, what are in the notes, be able to see it on an actual plan, different from summary zonings where you can't see everything, but with this particular one, there will be a preliminary development plan that will show what we've committed to in the CPA. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask anyone that would like to speak to this case to please approach the clerk. Anyone at all?
I'm Brenda Berry, and I didn't, I hated to not speak to y'all, I've been here behalf tonight with y'all, so. I'm Brenda Berry, Wake Road. Our property is attached to this, so, and we're pleased with what looks like, you know, it's come up with the council and, I mean, with the staff and everything, they've really worked with us, and so has Roy and them, so, we just, and we are, I haven't met any of y'all, so, but I'd We just, and we are, I haven't met any of y'all, so, but I do want to thank you for giving us the time to speak here, so, we're happy, okay? I know you like to hear that, don't you?
We certainly do.
Yeah, it's different than that negative stuff all the time.
Would anyone else like to address us? Seeing no one approach the clerk, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the discussion for board questions.
I have a couple. What is the effect or level of binding of map notes? Are they offering guidance? Do they have any teeth, so to speak?
They do, they are included in an area plan, and I think one way to look at it is we have the larger land use plan, and then we have area plans, and some area plans got to have gone to the level of notes because that reflects the public input and the amount of time discussing, in public input meetings, a parcel-by-parcel discussion. And so, often, the plan notes reflect the give-and-take in those public input meetings, and so, we take them seriously and use them for guidance.
Thank you. And one other, and I don't know if you know this, I didn't think of it beforehand, unfortunately. Do you know the buffer requirements between office and VLDR versus MDR and VLDR?
I don't write offhand, I'm sorry. I don't know the buffers. I know that the applicant was working with the landowners, not so much about just a buffer, but in the transitions with the density also, so, but I can certainly find out the buffer requirements.
Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
My head's something in response, if that's all right.
We may have someone who knows the buffer requirement.
What I can tell you, I probably do know the buffers, but I'd have to think for a moment. I do know, and again, this is a little bit zoning versus CPA.
Understood.
As part of our negotiations with the property owners, we have committed to a certain buffer that will be provided. What is different here, and I say this because it really has been a challenge, because we are in a mixed-use overlay district, normally you all would have the CPA, and you would have seen the, at the public hearing, there'd be a CPA, and there'd be a rezoning running concurrent, because the CPA goes with one process, and then your, the activity center has another process. That couldn't happen, so what we had to do this time is just give you the CPA, but we, there is an expectation of a buffer that is far and above what the code requires here.
Thank you.
If that helps.
It does. There's really more for comparison, and that answers it. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question about the MXD use, mixed-use property that exists to the east of the Green Level Church Road, which is not really part of this property, but on the east side, and it's all classified as MXD. Can you tell me how much of, how much is that property? How many acres?
I think I may have a slide here that, let's see. Let's see. We have mixed currently.
This is for the current property. I'm talking about the other property, and I'll come back to this one, actually, but...
Okay, I was thinking it was still in the activity center, but maybe it's not.
Right, go to the activity center, right, oh, yeah.
Let's see.
Trying to get this for...
Okay, let me go back to the activity center slide. Okay, let's see. The pink boundary is the activity center, so some of that, some of that mixed you were asking about is within the activity center?
Right.
So if we keep this in mind and we go to the mix, currently, there's 21.6 acres within that activity center of mixed. If the plan were amended with the request tonight, it would go up to 35.2.
Okay, maybe my, I'm misunderstanding. I thought the property that we are looking at is 207 acres? No?
No.
Tonight, the property that we're looking at tonight is 39.7, yes.
So basically, we are adding about 14 acres to the mixed use and reducing office and institutional by about 40 acres?
Yes.
And adding 26, so 40 acres coming out of O and I, and 26 acres going to medium-density residential, and 14 acres going to mixed use, right? Is that how?
That's what it looks like, yes.
So, but it's not, okay, all right, that's, I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? If we have no more questions, perhaps a motion?
I'll move that the board forward case number 12 CPA 03, Village at the Park Neighborhood Activity Center, to town council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Having no discussion?
I'll make a quick comment. I'll just, I just want to say that the mixed use at the corner, at that triangular corner, I'm gonna say triangular because it's fronted by the three streets, I think is a good solution to that area, and I would like to make sure that it is truly a mixed use. I think the intent of the plan would have supported that of the original plan.
Other comments? In that case, I will call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
And I believe that ends our public hearings, and so we'll now move on to consideration of updates to chapter two of the town code planning, the town code pertaining to boards and commissions.
Good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I'm presenting the code amendments pertaining to the boards and commissions. At the 2012 council staff retreat, the council authorized staff to take the necessary steps to eliminate the town center review commission. You and the council have already unanimously approved amending the land development ordinance to do just that. This is a cleanup of the town code to follow up that action, as well as a few minor housekeeping actions to the town code. The ordinance amendment proposes to delete section 2174 in its entirety. This is the existing section of the town code that pertains to the town center review commission. It also proposed, proposes to amend section 2171 to remove the text that requires a planning and zoning board member to serve as chair of the town center review commission. And these two changes will remove all references from the town code that pertain to the town center review commission. Some other housekeeping changes that we're proposing to the boards and commissions portion of the code include changing the title of section 2162 to general provisions. The current title is definitions and requirements for public hearing. And deleting section 2162C. The current text in that section requires a public hearing to amend any section of the boards and commissions portion of chapter two of our town code. State law only requires us to have a public hearing to amend any section of our code that pertains to the planning and zoning board and the zoning board of adjustment. Those two boards are our statutorily created boards. With the deletion of this section of the town code, we will continue to have public hearings anytime we seek to amend the code pertaining to this board and the zoning board of adjustment, but no other sections of the town code pertaining to boards and commissions. And this is consistent with how we amend other sections of the code, and they do not require public hearings. And finally, amending section 2172C. Current text states that zoning board of adjustment decisions for variances and appeals are recorded with the register of deeds. The proposed amendment is to make this more general and state, as appropriate, zoning board of adjustment decisions are recorded with the register of deeds. A very minor change. We've conducted the required public hearing before the town council, and no one spoke at that hearing. And staff recommends tonight that the planning and zoning board make a recommendation and forward this issue back to the town council for their action. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions? I think this is one we've talked about before, so there's no surprises here, right? In that case, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we forward TC 12-008B, chapter two, consideration for updates to chapter two, to town code pertaining to boards and commissions, to town council with recommendation for approval.
I make the signature. We have a motion and a second discussion. If there's no discussion, call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to our land development ordinance amendment, round 20B. Mr. Wilson.
Good evening. Round 20B is a proposed land development ordinance amendment that would allow beekeeping as a hobby. If you'd like, I can give my full presentation, or I can give a reduced version that would just reflect on changes that we've made since your work session last month.
Just, just to help folks that might be watching, we had an extensive and very active work session on this, and so, it's not as if we haven't been through this material in significant detail, so, I will ask for other input, but I think I'm okay going through the abbreviated slides.
Bullet points are good.
Agreed.
I mean, it doesn't have to be in-depth, but still important to get all the information.
Can you give us a high level, but don't miss the bullet points?
I'll move quickly. I believe that everyone's fairly familiar with the background, that we received complaints from homeowners on single-family lots in our R8 and our R12 zoning districts, and upon investigating, we determined that beekeeping was only mentioned in the land development ordinances and agricultural use in the R20, R40, and R80 zoning districts, and we realized at that point that it wasn't addressed as a hobby. Acknowledging that bees are important to the environment and recognizing that beekeeping was already occurring, the staff set in motion a public process to determine if beekeeping should be allowed to occur as a hobby in Cary, and if so, how. We researched model ordinances in other jurisdictions, realized this is a common issue around the country. We determined there are several key attributes that are commonly included in ordinances related to beekeeping. We began the process with a public hearing back in February the 23rd. We got feedback from the council, the original proposal was too restrictive. We got direction from the council to meet with some of the beekeeping experts who attended the public hearing, and we did so back in April, and we revised our proposal accordingly. Following that, we had a second public hearing on July the 26th, and then we came to you all for a work session on July the 30th, and we returned to your regular meeting this evening for a potential recommendation to the council. Our original proposal is perhaps best noted for a 30,000-square-foot lot size and the requirement of fencing on flyways if a hive was to be within 50 feet of a property line. Our revised proposal that's before you this evening is less restrictive with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, allowing two hives for lots that are 6,000 to 20,000 square feet in size. After that, there's one additional hive that's allowed for each additional increment of 10,000 square feet, up to a maximum of eight, and no fencing is required. There is a 10-foot setback proposed. There are also changes proposed in terms of nuisances in the town code that would address what a nuisance is and how, what the options would be for abating and resolving nuisances. There is also the ability to revoke a permit if needed. In terms of fiscal impact, the staff does believe that there would be a fiscal impact with the police and planning departments. It's a modest but noticeable increase in demand that's anticipated. Not being able to predict exactly what that demand would be, we're proposing to monitor new activities closely and identify any future staffing and/or budgetary needs based on actual demand. There were several key issues that were raised at the hearing. To try to move through these quickly, the honeybee definition is one that we've received input, and we've revised accordingly. There was discussion about the 10-foot setback. Some of the beekeeping experts suggested that no setback is needed. Staff continues to believe that a 10-foot minimum setback is dimensionally achievable on any lot, and while there's not necessarily any scientific evidence to justify that this distance provides tangible benefits, we do believe it provides comfort for neighbors. As far as the minimum lot size, although we state a minimum lot size, it's really the minimum lot size for the smallest single-family residential lot in which beekeeping is proposed as an activity, so we don't believe that that's really an issue. Also, council member did inquire about beekeeping in parks and community gardens. There was extensive discussion at the planning and zoning board's work session about that issue, and I believe the consensus was, as we heard from the beekeeping experts, it's probably better in terms of protecting the hives, having them in more of a private area on someone's single-family lot near the park or the community garden, rather than actually in the park or garden where they'd be more exposed to the public, and there's more risk of vandalism. And lastly, regarding education and certification, I think everyone felt that this was a good thing, but as far as the ordinance is concerned, there's, there is not a class or a certification that we believe can appropriately be linked to the ordinance, that we'd all have a guarantee would still be there two, three, 10 years from now. So while we believe that's something that should be encouraged, that's not included in the proposed amendment at this time. So, in terms of the revision since your work session, we revised the definition of bees and beekeeping. We've clarified the relationship between lot size and the number of permitted hives. We've provided an option. We did receive additional input from one of the beekeeping experts to provide an option for fencing instead of a setback. We, staff however, continues to recommend the minimum setback of 10 feet. We believe that it's simple, easy to understand and predictable, and provides certainty for neighbors. Lastly, we clarified the description of nuisance bees with respect to swarming in the proposed amendments to the town code. At this time, we'd recommend approval of the proposed amendment, including option one, which would require a 10-foot setback for beehives. Here's a summary of the current proposal. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Questions?
Do we currently have anything in the code that would address nuisance swarming or nuisance animals outside of this ordinance? Like, do we have anything that exists that would be a provision for a problem, problem swarm if there weren't an ordinance like this?
You're gonna let Lisa Glover answer that question?
No, we don't. We've got a nuisance animal ordinance in the code, but animals, the definition of animals does not include bees. So that's why we were suggesting adding this new section, 6-71A, and so that would be the only thing that would apply to bees.
Other questions? No questions at all? In that case, does someone have a motion?
I will move that we forward land development ordinance amendments, round 20, item B, beekeeping, to town council with recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation, noting that that would include the option one for the setbacks that's recommended by staff.
Do we have a second? Discussion?
I'll just make a comment. I'll be voting against the motion primarily because I think there are many hobbies that people have in Cary which are not regulated by our ordinances, and I find that this ordinance is an overreach of government.
Other comments? In that case, I'm going to call the motion. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that carries seven to one. And we will move on to land development ordinance... And we will move on to land development ordinance, round 23a through h. You're still on the hot seat.
Yes. Tonight, we bring you the 23rd round of amendments to the town's land development ordinance. These amendments are grouped into eight categories, which are identified as items A through H. Item A pertains to density for life care and nursing home units. It would increase the density in office institutional and office research and development zoning districts from nine to 12 dwelling units per acre. This proposed density is consistent with what is currently allowed in the residential multifamily zoning district and would apply to independent living and assisted living units. At the public hearing, there were no comments or discussion regarding this item. Item B pertains to home occupations. An accessory use permit would no longer be required for certain home occupations with no visible impact. The maximum square footage for home occupations requiring an accessory use permit would be reduced from 20% to 10% of heated floor area, not to exceed 500 square feet. This change is proposed to maintain residential building code requirements and not trigger applicability of the stricter commercial building code. Again, this item, there were no comments or discussion at the public hearing. Since the public hearing, the text has been modified by the staff to clarify that the size reduction for home occupation from 20% to 10% of the floor area only applies to home occupations that require an accessory use permit. So this limitation would not apply to those home occupations that do not require an accessory use permit. There are three amendments related to signage, item C. The first of these concerns theater marquee signs. This proposed amendment would allow marquee signs to project into public right-of-way where there is no front building setback required. It would also allow the background, rather than the letters, to be illuminated. Three lines of manually-applied changeable copy would be allowed, and marquee signs would not count toward wall sign area limits. The electronic changeable copy would continue to be prohibited. This item also did not have any comments or receive any discussion at the public hearing. The second sign-related amendment would create a new category for pedestrian-oriented signs. Current LDO provisions limit height of directory signs to five feet and are oriented towards vehicular traffic. This amendment would create the new category with specific standards, including that they would not be legible from a public right-of-way or a private street or drive aisle, would have a maximum height of seven feet, a maximum sign area of 15 square feet, as to the 10 that's currently permitted, and the location of the signs and design features would be included in the master sign plan for the development. Here's an example of such a sign. This example is six feet in height. And then here are a couple of examples of such signs in the built environment, of which the one on the left is taller than six feet in height. At the public hearing, there was one speaker who spoke to this item, requesting that consideration be given to allowing these signs to be internally eliminated. And as part of the council's discussion, they asked that the planning and zoning board consider internal illumination as well as whether the proposed height of seven feet is adequate. The draft text has been revised to allow internal illumination and to also include the seven-foot maximum height. Per the board's discussion at the work session, there appeared to be consensus, however, to allow such signs to be up to nine feet tall, with the limitation that all text would be seven feet or less in height, with the exception of the word "directory," which could be placed between seven and nine feet in height if desired. The third and final sign item relates to open house signs. This proposed amendment would extend some flexibility that was previously adopted in February of 2010, increasing both the color options as well as the frequency and time of which such signs can be displayed. It would extend the sunset date, which this sunsetted back in February of this year. It would propose a new sunset date of December 31st, 2013. There was no comment or discussion regarding this item at the hearing either. For item D, I'd like to introduce Mr. Charles Brown from the town's engineering department, who will speak to this item.
Good evening, board members. The stormwater rules that we're contemplating would ensure compliance with the Jordan Lake Water Supply nutrient strategy. That was part of the session laws passed in 2009 by the General Assembly. The text approved, was approved by the Environmental Management Commission in May of 2012. This rules limits the nitrogen phosphorus loading from new development within the Jordan Lake watershed and provides stormwater controls to protect the public water supply. It also specifies what constitutes major variance from the state rules, which may be only granted by the EMC. Also, as part of that, in between the work session and now, House Bill 953, which is part of session law 2012, it passed, and what it would do is to offset implementation for two years, but we want to go ahead and proceed with implementation of these rules. There were no comments or discussion at the public hearing.
Then going to item E. Item E includes some general provisions related to zoning conditions to emphasize that zoning conditions are voluntary and may only address conformance with ordinances and plans and impacts generated by a development. There were no comments or discussion regarding this item at the public hearing either. Item F would establish a new use called clothing donation drop-off stations. This use typically consists of a collection bin or shed for clothing or other textiles for purposes of resale or recycling. The operators typically seek to locate in retail parking lots. The closest use in our current ordinance is a dumpster, which currently requires masonry enclosure. And several recent inquiries from drop-off station operators led to this amendment. In particular, they were requesting relief from the current screening requirements, including a masonry enclosure. Here's a picture of one such drop-off station. Here's another example where two of them were situated next to each other. The proposed amendment, the use would be allowed in the general commercial zoning district and the commercial sub-district of the town center, and it would also be subject to new use-specific standards. In particular, and I'll describe this as option A, I'll get to option B in a moment, but at the public hearing, the option that we presented would require these to be located on an improved surface, that they would be less than 500 square feet. They would require them to be located where the principal use contains greater than 100,000 square feet of floor area, and they would have to be at least 200 feet from the nearest public right-of-way, and they may not occupy required parking spaces for the project. There would be visibility and screening requirements, including landscaping on two sides for at least 50% of the height of the bins. And in terms of appearance, there would be no high-intensity colors. Signage would be allowed on two sides, but would be limited to 12 square feet visible from any single vantage point. There were no speakers at the public hearing regarding this item. However, there were questions and concerns from council members regarding whether or not there was a need for such uses, whether or not these were profit versus nonprofit in nature, and the potential impact on local nonprofit organizations. Between the public hearing and your meeting tonight, the staff has put together another option, an alternative approach for your consideration, which was discussed as part of your work session. And that would be to locate, the potential for locating these stations adjacent to commercial building, much the way we handle outdoor sales along the front facade of a building, rather than out in the parking lot. And also, we've changed both option A and option B to include required signage per state law for public disclosure regarding for-profit versus the nonprofit status of these bins. Under option B, here's an example of where such clothing bins could be placed. Here an example, here's an example of some other smaller recycling bins for plastics and paper and cans and bottles. And here's another example of where such clothing bins could be placed under option B. Item G is electronic gaming operations. Other terms for this use include internet sweepstakes and internet cafes. 2010, state legislation attempted to make this use illegal. The decision by the legislature to prohibit this use was overturned by the NC Court of Appeals, however, and this is currently an unlisted use in our land development ordinance. This amendment seeks to establish where such a use would be allowed and specify use-specific standards to ensure neighborhood compatibility. As proposed, the districts where this use would be allowed are the general commercial district, the industrial zoning district, and within the airport overlay portion of the office research and development district, as well as the commercial sub-district of the town center. A 500-foot separation would also be required to ensure compatibility with nearby uses, including other electronic gaming operations. Parking would be determined as the greatest of three different criteria, and no alcohol may be served. Electronic gaming machines are also proposed to be allowed as an accessory use in the general commercial, as well as the commercial sub-district of the town center. As an accessory use, up to four machines could be allowed as an accessory to any legal-conforming principal use, except an electronic gaming operation. At the public hearing, there was one property owner who advocated for his ability to be able to continue having this use on his property, and we clarified that as proposed, the use would not be allowed in non-residential areas within PDD or MXD districts. And last, item H includes five amendments that are categorized as minor revisions or clarifications to the ordinance. H1 would apply general requirements pertaining to nonconformities to both uses and structures. Item H2 would limit the time period allowed to provide protection for exposed slopes to 15 calendar days. Item H3 clarifies that an RV may be located beside or behind a residence, but not between the residence and the street. Item H4 clarifies terminology related to projections into building setbacks and allows applicants to request a variance in certain types of developments where such a request is not currently an option. And item H5 corrects the section reference related to home daycare use. There were no comments or discussion at the public hearing regarding any of the items in item H. However, would note that the text for item H3, the parking of RVs, boats, and trailers, was also discussed at your recent work session. In particular, the discussion focused on providing a side yard screening option for boats, RVs, and trailers located in the side yard between the house and the street on a corner lot. Based on what I believe was the consensus in your work session discussion, this side yard option would allow boats, trailers, and RVs to be parked in the side or rear yard adjacent to a public street, when it is screened from the view of the street by an opaque fence that is a minimum of six feet in height, with either additional opaque fencing up to eight feet in height, and/or evergreens or trees that are tall enough to obscure the view from the street of any portions of the boat, trailer, or RV that are greater than six feet in height. The staff recommends approval of the proposed round 23 LDO amendments, including option B under item F, the clothing donation drop-off stations. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about any of these items.
I'll just note that I think we want to take these one at a time rather than en masse. And so perhaps what we want to do to keep focused is, no other questions right now to A, take a motion on A, and then move on to the subsequent items. Is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt the LDO amendment 23, Part A, to Town Council with the recommendation to approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Just for anyone watching, we have discussed this. This isn't the first time we're looking at this, so it's not that we haven't taken some time on it. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes eight to zero. Let's move on to B. Do we have any discussion on B?
There was a discussion about changing the wording for the reduction in square footage so that if a, if an occupational, a home occupation required an accessory use permit and was compliant with state code, that the 10% cap would not apply, and that would be at 20% as it currently stands today. So there wouldn't be a reduction to 10% if that business or home were willing to comply with state building codes. And I'm not sure what the verbiage would look like for that, or if the, if that's the pleasure of the rest of the board, but that, that was a suggestion that I'd like to propose.
Well, if you strongly believe in that, I would suggest you maybe make the motion, and we're going to have to live with the motion language you invent.
Okay.
First of all, do we have other comments, or is that the only? Ms. Mira, I think it's all on your shoulders.
I will make a motion that we approve item B, home occupations, with the modification that the portion of the area within the residence used for the home occupation may not exceed 10% of the heated floor area of the residence, or 500 square feet, whichever is less, unless the holder of the permit is willing to be consistent with, I don't, do I really have to come up with this verbiage here? Because legal, I think, would be better at it. I do. All right. So the, whichever is less, unless the permit holder chooses to abide...
To comply.
To comply with state building codes, in which case, the portion of the area within the residence used for the home occupation may not exceed 20% of the heated floor area of the residence, or 500 square feet, whichever is less.
And I just want to ask for clarification. Does that include, with the exception for the daycare facility that was listed?
Yeah, where is that exception listed?
It's within the actual wording.
It's usually requiring permit to...
I believe. I just want to make sure. Well, it doesn't, I don't mean to get hung up on...
Get hung up. Let's get it right.
I saw it. Did I make that up? Wasn't there something that I read?
No, it's supposed to be there, yeah.
The daycare amendment is...
Oh, there it is, on the front. Reduce the area allowed for all, for other home occupations, with the exception of small home daycare facilities, from 20 to 10% of the heated floor area.
Correct.
Right. And you're saying...
This is a description of that, but the actual ordinance language, I don't see it in the ordinance language.
The concern is that daycares would get included with the proposed change?
Well, they're, I guess technically, they would be part of the proposed change. The question is, do they have state, are they obligated under that additional 10% anyway once they...
All I can tell you is they're handled separately. They're, they're handled as, so they, your amendment as proposed would not catch them. They're, they're handled separately per the ordinance, and I'm not familiar to tell you the detailed limitations associated with them, but they, as you proposed your amendment, they would not be included. They're handled separately.
What, what excludes them?
I'm going to let someone else who might be able to answer that step up.
I can't answer directly, but if I can make a suggestion. It sounds as though what you were asking is that if possible, we allow home occupations requiring accessory use permit to go up to 20% of the heated floor area of the residence. I think that we will need to check with inspections and permit staff to see if that's allowable under the building code. As I read the staff report, the issue was that, under the state building code, that may not be allowable, which would mean we couldn't allow it in the LDO.
Okay. So can I whip off my motion, and can we table this particular?
Or if we could take that as a recommendation, that staff evaluate whether that's possible, and then, and then with the thought that if it is possible, they'll include it in their recommendation to council. But I think that's something we'd have to look at and see if it's possible. And then, daycares are highly regulated by the state in a separate manner. I don't think they would have a 500-square-foot limit on them under the state building code because typically they're going to encompass a large portion of the house that they're in. So I imagine that's why the text in the beginning looks to treat them separately. So we'll have to take a look at this and make sure we get that thought incorporated into the language, and then double-check on the building code issue as to whether... into the language, and then double-check on the building code issue as to whether we have the flexibility to go to 20% or not. We need to double-check that.
Can I suggest we might amend your motion?
I'm going to withdraw my motion altogether, because I don't, because I don't think that what we're looking at or voting on is what the final piece is going to be. And I would, I don't want to make any vote personally or motion without seeing what we're going to actually be putting, putting to a vote. So I don't think this is close to it yet, without answering the question about where the daycares treated, and are we even allowed to, to make this adjustment.
Would somebody like to move to table this one?
I think, I think we can forward it. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I mean, either I can, we can deny it, or we can table it. One of the two options we have.
If I could add one more piece of information that may or may not help your discussion. The change, based on my conversations with inspections and permitting, when you go above 10% for the home occupation, it's a change of occupancy, which triggers different, more commercial building code requirements. And if you have an activity that involves other people coming in, it becomes a, it can potentially move towards being a place of assembly. So there, and I guess the philosophical thought was, it shifts from being a home occupation to being something more non-residential in nature, and state building code reflects that with a 10% criteria, where much stricter code applies. So the thought here was to simplify things and not be requiring accessory use permits for home occupations in fairly simple, non-obtrusive cases, where you don't have employees coming to the home, where all the employees, you know, that work for the business live in the home. And so we're trying to simplify and line up at that natural breakpoint with state building code. And so, I don't know if that additional context helps any, but that's why, that's part of what went into the change that we had brought forward as part of this round.
Is there any particular impact if this were tabled for a month?
No, just, just the, you know, we'll bring it forward as a separate...
I realize it won't be aligned, but...
Right. And that's okay. There is no particular timetable driving this one.
Well, I'll move to table it for 30 days then.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to table, and a second. Do we have discussion on that?
Let me tell you, let me just kind of give some input into my concern here. Music lessons, photo, photo studios, you know, in a, in a home that is 1,500 square feet, you're saying a photo studio can be 150 square feet. That's not even, that's not enough room for them to actually do any work in that studio. And, and what I'm looking for is the option for them, if, you know, I understand there's a 10% limit, but let's make a way, so if they're willing to comply with the state building code, they, they can go beyond that 10%, up to the 20%. Or for music lessons, you know, a young piano teacher just starting out isn't, is going to be in a home that may be 1,200, 1,500, 1,700 square feet. If they're teaching in the front living room, you know, they, that may be over 10% of the square footage of that house. So, you know, I just want to create as many options as we can for them to be compliant.
Well, having started a business in my home years ago, I will tell you that there probably wasn't a square foot of our home that we didn't work in. So I'm, I'm not sure these discussions are, or distinctions are all that relevant, but I certainly agree that we need to clean up language here so we understand what we're voting on. I don't think it makes sense for us to send this along with approval, based upon the assumption that the language would look good someday.
Just for clarification, if you could guide us as to whether you want this to come back to your next regular meeting, or if you prefer for it to come to a work session, that would be helpful. We'd be glad to bring additional information to you.
I think we should discuss in the next work session.
Well, we don't have a work session in September. I'm going to suggest that we've turned around this. I think we understand the issues. If we can bring this back in September to our regular meeting with language that is nice and clearly defined, we should be...
I didn't, I don't have a session in September.
Yeah, if we could get that by email, the new language, and also just a reference to where in our ordinance the daycare, I remember reviewing that section before, and I think we just have something that kind of points to the state code, but if we could just kind of lock down all of where that is.
And answer that question about what level of flexibility we have to achieve, and then we can vote on the issue of whether or not...
Excellent.
...we brought up whether we want to do that.
So the motion is to table this for 30 days. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. We're going to move on to C, which is signs. Discussion, questions?
Questions?
I think we had some discussion during the work session, and I think the proposal has addressed some of the concerns that were raised during the work session, and I, I think, at least I am satisfied with the way it has been proposed. So if, unless other people have any concerns?
I just have one question. The signage at the directory, that is not proposed to be in any way eternally eliminated, that's only exterior illumination, correct?
No, we've, we've changed the proposed amendment that the pedestrian, you're referring to the pedestrian-oriented directory sign? We've changed the proposed amendment to allow for internal illumination.
And that would be only from interior, non-right-of-way visual access, correct? Or would the pedestrian-oriented directory sign potentially be eternally eliminated as well? I mean, on a public right-of-way?
This, we're just discussing the pedestrian-oriented directory sign, and we're just proposing that it would be internally eliminated. And by its, basically by definition, it's intended to not be legible from a public right-of-way, or an internal drive aisle, or parking area. So you may see a light off in the distance, you know, where this is located, along the sidewalk, or in a courtyard, but it, it will be quite different from other signs that are currently allowed in an intermater, in an internally illuminated manner by the ordinance. Does that answer your question or address your concern?
I believe so. I'm just not in support of internally illuminated pedestrian sign. I mean, we saw examples. He showed us the sign that was actually more than seven feet, that showed external illumination coming down. I just think there are other ways to eliminate it than necessarily a cabinet sign.
Should, should we maybe break this down into, I hate to do this, but C1, C2, C3? Because frankly, I'm going to want to raise a question on C1, but I probably am not concerned about C2 or C3. Are you, are you all right with taking it one at a time?
Sure.
Okay, let's, let's start with C1. Any comments on C1? I already said I have a comment.
C1 being the marquee signs.
Marquee signs. Yeah, I have a comment on this one. I spent six months on a sign ordinance task force, back during a period where signs were a complex issue for us. And, and I remember having to answer to citizens why it is you couldn't have changeable type electronic signs or pole signs in Cary, unless, of course, you are Cary. And we ended up putting up what we called emergency alert signs that were illuminated changing type pole signs. And now we have something that Cary wants to do, and we've decided we want to change the ordinance so Cary can do it, but we don't want anybody else to do it. And I kind of questioned, well, why do we have ordinances if we don't want to have them apply to us? Now, I appreciate that we have a theater that we're really trying to put together, and everybody's excited about it, but we want to do something for our theater that we won't let anybody else do. And I'm, frankly, have a problem with that.
Just to clarify, the, the change as proposed would not just apply downtown.
So any theater that wanted to have a marquee that was extending from the building could do so, and they would not have it included in your signage?
Yes, any, any theater that meets these criteria would be allowed to have a marquee. There, there are some items here that may be more likely to be experienced in the town center, but this is not specific to the town center zoning district.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the question, can you think of any theater in Cary that would qualify for this marquee exception, other than the one we're talking about in downtown Cary?
Well, there are other theaters with marquees, and...
I asked if they would qualify, given the restrictions.
Yes, if you were to take the, the theater out at crossroads, if they were to choose that they would like to change the method of illumination and do their marquee differently, then they could in accordance with these provided criteria here.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually had the exact same concern when it was town centers, small theaters that effectively only zeroed in on that one theater that we were building in. And what I've seen more recently, I think, it does allow others to do it, so...
Well, you've helped me allay some of my concerns, because I thought we had so narrowly defined it, that there was one theater in Wake County that we could potentially have this applied to, but it sounds as if we've made it a little bit more general.
It's, it's notably more general than what you saw many months, several months back, yes. And it's, and it's, it doesn't seek, I don't believe that it seeks to change as many things as that original amendment that you're recalling sought to change. This is a little more general, and I think more mainstream in terms of what it looks to do, as far as theater marquees are concerned.
And we are going to allow changeable type on these marquees at any theater in town?
It's the same changeable copy that's allowed today. It's not anything digital or LED.
I'm sorry, manual, you're right. Little magnetic letters, yes.
It, it does adjust the way that you count the signage, as far as display area is concerned. It does allow that the background, rather than the letters, may be the illuminated component of the sign. And it does allow that marquee signs can project in the public right-of-way if there's no front building setback required, which would, of course, only apply to a theater that was actually built facing and along the street. A lot of them are facing parking, so the marquee is internal to the sign.
I can grant you the public right-of-way one, because there aren't a lot of theaters that have that situation other than ours.
Right.
And I think you've effectively allayed my fears that we're carving out something just for the town, and it doesn't apply to anyone else. It sounds as if we've made it a little bit more general.
It's, it has, it has changed quite a bit from what you saw previously.
Okay, do we have someone that wants to make a motion on item C1, which is theater marquees?
Chairman, I'll move that we get the board forward LDO round 23, item C, to the town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Now, can I ask you, on the pedestrian signs, are you...
He said C1.
No, no, he mentioned C.
I'm recommending item C, thank you.
Yes, I second the motion.
I don't want to break this down.
Okay, and that's fine, and you know, oh, go ahead.
Well, I, I want to know if you had any modifications concerning the height of the pedestrian information signs.
I think we were...
Did that include the seven feet as proposed, or did that include the nine-foot option that we discussed in the work session? However, the only text between seven and nine feet would be the word directory.
I was understanding that it was going to allow the nine feet.
They just tried to state that in our motion, because right now, that isn't in the staff report. So you need to just add that to your motion.
Okay. So we are with the understanding that the maximum restriction on pedestrian oriented directory signs shall be nine feet.
With, give them the rest, please.
And, and the only text that would be allowed above seven feet would be the word directory.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Ryder, a second from Nath, Mr. Nath, discussion? In that case, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe that carried eight to zero. Just give me a second to catch up on my notes. I believe that brings us to item number D, stormwater rules.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion on item D, that we forward this to council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. We're now to item E, conditional rezonings. Any discussion on this? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we forward item E from LDO amendments round 23 to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Mr. Nath, discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. Item number F, clothing.
I will make a motion that we forward item F to council with a recommendation for denial.
I will second that.
All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to vote no, just because I would have liked to seen more exploration of the two options.
Thank you. Item number G, electronic gaming operations and machines. Discussion?
Question. In our work session, asked a question on the narrative was a little confusing, because it implied that alcohol would be allowed in the principal use, but I believe the proper application of this is that for principal use, no alcohol is allowed.
That's correct.
Accessory use, with the four or the six machines are going to be allowed, can those be placed in an establishment that sells alcohol?
Yes.
Okay, so principal use, no alcohol, somebody wants to start one of these, no alcohol. And that's by state statute, is that correct?
It's not statute, but it's the regulations of the alcoholic beverages commission. I believe they would not qualify for a permit to sell alcoholic beverages.
Okay, so it's regulated on a level other than the town of Cary, but the state allows these to, or the alcohol beverage commission allows these to be placed in bars and taverns and that type of thing? So we're just kind of following that lead? Fair statement?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as the accessory use is concerned, it's a maximum of four machines. And if the principal use that the accessory gaming operation was tied to, if that principal use qualified to get an ABC permit, then alcohol could be served as part of the principal use on premises.
Exactly.
And the four machines would be accessory to that.
Okay, thank you.
Is this language clear to your satisfaction?
Yeah, 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 it was more in the, the staff narrative. Yep, no, I'm fine with it. It seems a little contradictory.
Other questions?
But, that's fine.
Do we have a motion, please?
I am making a motion to approve LDO amendment round 23, part G, to the town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans, and is reasonable and to, in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and the presentation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
In that case, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And then we have item number H, minor revisions and clarifications. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion if there's no discussion.
Please do.
I move that the board forward LDO amendment. I'm, I move that the board forward LDO amendment, section H, to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Yes, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. That completes our, our formal agenda. I did have one item, perhaps, of information. We have a little bit of a dilemma coming up, in that we don't have a work session next month, and we have one formal meeting, but unfortunately, I am going to be out of country for that formal meeting. Or, excuse me, no, I'm going to be in country for the formal meeting, but I'm going to be out of the country for a meeting on October 9th, which is a, a joint town council boards meeting, where we may be expected to present something, I understand. And the issue is, Ms. Rudy is going to jump from our ship effective October 1st. Unfortunately, we lose her, and so I will need someone to represent us at that October 9th meeting. And we don't have to resolve it right now, but I would ask in September if someone would think about their willingness to represent us, and then I will point out that in our October general meeting, I will be looking to have someone elected as a vice chair.
And Mr. Chair, the other option is for Ms. Rudy to relinquish her role as vice chair at her September meeting, and you could vote on a new vice chair at that time, if you wanted to, of course, knowing that you have new members coming in in October.
My preference would be, since we have new members coming in, in October, to give them a chance to actually vote on the vice chair. So I would prefer we find a stopgap, stopgap option-
Interim, interim vice chair?
An interim vice, or a vice vice chair, or whatever we want to put a label on it, someone to cover the, the meeting on October 9th. So I ask you to be thinking about that, and we'll discuss it at our next general working.
For, for the record, I will be out of town also for that October 9th meeting.
So you aren't qualified-
I'm not qualified. That's one way to get out of it. One way to get out of it, go out of town.
In that case, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
The meeting that Cary needs to note about?
I make it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll be there with it.
I make a motion, we adjourn the short meeting that we had today.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries unanimously.
Yeah.
Good night, folks.
Good together.